Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board. We're going to call the meeting to order at 6:34 today, June 14th, 2022. And we'll start on this Flag Day with a recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Our first order of business this night is Whistleberry Glen, Lot 11, in exchange for the returning of Lot 3 to the covenant. Discussion and possible vote. Is there anyone here to present for that?
There is not. Mr. Chair, if I may, there is not. They asked if someone might need to be here. I thought it was fairly administrative enough that you could like to hand over.
That's fine.
So if I may, Whistleberry Glen, the map you see...
Tom, I... I can't hear you, sorry.
Thank you. Let me be the first to hear, speaking into the microphone, because our recording secretary is at home and taking minutes, and we like the way the system works, and we want them to keep doing it. So help out by being a better person than me and speaking into the microphone. With that said, my Myakopa. So Whistleberry Glen has essentially two lots left. They are, have not been released. They are Lots 4 and Lot 11, shown on the plan on the screen. And so what they would like to do is swap one of them and release Lot 3. So the lot release form that you have before you shows Lot 11, exchange and returning Lot 3 to the covenant. So they have provided the covenant form, so I understand what it is. We worked on the form together to make sure the information was in there proper. I believe it's simply a one-for-one swap. The board's done it before, as you probably saw in the letter that the attorney wrote to the board. So it's largely an administrative task of swapping one-for-one for 11 for 3.
All right. Have we had a chance to go out and... Well, I suppose that's moot at this point. All right. The Chair will accept a motion to approve the exchange of Lot 11 for Lot 3 of Whistleberry Glen subdivision.
How will make said motion?
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. Now it's open for discussion. Any questions, comments, or concerns in regards to this? Are they roughly the same size, Tom?
Yes. 11 is a little bigger than 3, but they can't release any of them until everything's completed in the subdivision.
So what's going on with this thing? It's been, it's been in the covenant since 2007. I believe we renewed the covenant last year?
Yeah. So as I understand, this was a subdivision that was created prior, just before one of the most recent economic meltdowns in 2008. So the subdivision sort of sat fallow for a while. Sold to somebody else who essentially started building the subdivision that was previously approved. So everything has been sort of in amber until this fellow built it, bought it, and started building the development.
So it sat for 14 years? It did. I believe they had the roadway systems put in. The gentleman went bankrupt, and it was bought. And they came before us, I want to say it was four, five months ago, and asked for renewal on the original. And I believe we approved it under the conditions that meet current bylaw standards.
Yeah, their letter says that in July 2008, seven of the lots were released by the Planning Board, and in April 2010, five additional were released, leaving only 4 and 11 being encumbered by the original covenant.
Do we know what's left for the services and whatnot to be completed?
I do not. But at the end of the day, the purity that we're holding doesn't get released until the work's been completed.
Right.
So we're not losing any ground. We're swapping a lot for a lot. Apparently, a person who looked at the lots said, "I'd much rather have this one." And they're trying to make it happen so this person can buy Lot 3 versus Lot 11.
But they can't until everything's complete.
So release 3 from the covenant. We put Lot 11 back in the covenant.
The other way around.
Thank you. The other way around. Release Lot 11. Lot 3 goes back under the covenant, which is what the release letter says. And then it's essentially status quo as it was before.
So all the other lots have not been purchased?
I would venture to say that other other lots have been purchased and likely have houses on them. So two lots permanent under the covenant. At the end of the night, two lots will be under the covenant. Just one of those lots will be different.
Okay. No further questions? Mr. Deion, how do you feel?
Mr. Deion says aye.
Come back to me, please. Kerne Leachay says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodilo says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
All right. I have an original of the form here. Ends up being the last time. I'm going to ask board members to sign it, except for the Chair, who can sign it in front of her notaries we did the last time. So it'll be form proper for that. If you don't mind signing and passing it down, that'll be great. And if it was me on a day like today, I would forget by the time it got to me that I was not supposed to sign that. So when it gets to you, I'm going to say it again.
That's okay. I was just looking for my pen.
It's all right.
All right. The next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan, Rewild Renewables Float Lane Zero Rear Plymouth Street, this is map 45, Lot 1. Do we have the applicant here?
My name is Dan Gagnon, professional engineer with...
Could you pull it a little closer, Mr. Gagnon?
Yep. Good evening. My name is Dan Gagnon, professional engineer with Beals &amp; Thomas. I'm here representing the applicant, Rewild Renewables. We have received, this is again the preliminary site subdivision plan. We received a peer review comment back on the project. We've reviewed the comment letter. We understand the comments, and we would like to move forward and incorporate these changes as we prepare the definitive subdivision plan for the project.
And do you need time to respond to the comments?
Our intentions at this point is to incorporate these into our final subdivision plan, the definitive. There is a permitted earth removal at the site, correct.
You haven't done a site walk on this one?
Do not believe we have.
This is down off Plymouth Street, down by the old Agway Building?
Yes.
All right. So now would be an excellent time to arrange a site walk in regards to that.
If I may, these projects, this preliminary subdivision plan has lapsed its 45-day window for approval. We appreciate the review and the peer review. We will work to incorporate the comments provided by the peer reviewer into the definitive subdivision plan. We also like to note that legally, the board does not have to take action on the preliminary, excuse me, preliminary site plan, or subdivision plan. And at this point, we are not looking to continue this meeting.
So may I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Chair?
Please do.
So is it your intent to just simply file a definitive plan at this point?
That is our intention, correct. The board has the ability to, as I understand it, to either approve, not approve, or make no action on a preliminary subdivision plan. And with that, I leave it to you and...
Well, I believe, and I could be mistaken, that we felt that the application was incomplete, and we extended the period of time to fulfill your application in order for you to apply for an ANRAD.
Now, we, again, we requested a waiver from the ANRAD requirement on this preliminary subdivision plan.
And I believe the board allowed you more time to complete your application and provide an ANRAD, because I believe when we originally looked at this, there was extensive wetlands in regards to this project, and that would, that would certainly be something we would take into consideration in regards to the roadway system and the lots. So, Mr. Bott, if I could ask your professional opinion in regards to this matter?
Well, to the point that a preliminary plan doesn't carry any force with it. It's not something that's reportable. It's not something we have hearings for. It is essentially an opportunity for the applicant to present something to the board and get the board's feedback in order to refine their definitive plan. The vast majority of folks go directly to a definitive plan. Some folks will file a preliminary plan, and so when they split it up, you've got 45 days for the preliminary and 90 days for the definitive. So if the board doesn't act on a preliminary plan, if the board just rejects it in total, or in the cases I've pointed out, 45 days of lapses, and whether there was an agreement to extend or not, there really isn't any, any effect to not following through with a preliminary plan and going directly to a subdivision plan. The rules of engagement are if you file your definitive plan within seven months of when you filed the preliminary plan, then you have that continuing goes along. So when we get down to the definitive plan, that's when you have the, basically mean something. You've got rules, you've got regulations, you've got conditions you have to follow.
Well, my question is more along the lines of the, the board did not approve a waiver of the ANRAD in regards to the wetland delineation area, and gave the proponent more time to complete his application, and that kind of leaves us in a bit of a gray area as that that was never done.
Well, actually, I'm going to turn it over. Are you comfortable talking about the ANRAD? So I'm going to turn it over to Andy, because Andy had had a couple conversations about ANRADS for preliminary plans. So with that, Andy Gleins, our consulting engineer.
Andy Gleins, professional civil engineer with Fussin' O'Neil, acting as the town's civil engineering consultant. I was the one that wrote the comment letter dated June 9th, 2020, specifically regarding the ANRAD in the past. And in this case, I recommend that the Planning Board would approve a waiver for not requiring an ANRAD during the preliminary plan stage, just due to the extents of the lots and the area that's involved in this project. It is more beneficial to the town, the conservation agent, and the Conservation Commission, in my opinion, to wait until more information is given from the applicant on what is proposed for the development of the subdivision, and have them complete the ANRAD at the definitive plan stage, in lieu of having the Conservation Commission approve the ANRAD at the preliminary stage, and then not have as much involvement, if any, in the definitive plan review stage of the project. So I don't think there's, I don't think the town's really losing anything by allowing the applicant to submit and have the ANRAD approved by the Conservation Commission concurrently with the Planning Board reviewing the definitive plan.
So we didn't approve it because the application was incomplete. I can take Mr. Gleins' comments into consideration, but again, that still leaves us outside of the required timeframe.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
One of the other notable comments in my memo is particularly pertaining to the, I guess, the consistency and accuracy of the current topography that's used in the preliminary plan submission. I haven't done a site walk for this myself, but based on, actually, one of the aerial images that was included in the applicant's submission package, the extent of the clearing and grading has extended beyond what the topography is currently showing on the plans. If you can scroll down to what that figure number is, it's the aerial map. So at... Huh? No, that's perfect. So I did review the proposed cul-de-sac and subdivision based on the grading and profile that was provided by the applicant, and provided numerous comments about adjusting the vertical alignment and grading in that regard. But really, to do a thorough review and provide some real recommendation to the Planning Board, I'd need updated topography and full survey of the area that would encompass this cul-de-sac, which I would be okay with having the applicant prepare that survey and submit that as part of their definitive plan submission. It's, they're required to provide more information at the definitive plan stage, and as the town planner mentioned, there isn't any real approval.
Binding.
Yeah. So we're not, you know, just because the applicant moves forward to the definitive plan submission, doesn't mean that the Planning Board is definitely going to approve the definitive plan once that's submitted and more information is provided at that stage.
Thank you. But it is the opinion of the board that, or my opinion, if that makes any difference, that the application was incomplete at the time, and you requested to complete the application, and as such, that is, that is where we stand in regards to this.
Certainly, sir, and I think the board could make a motion to say, "We're going to deny the preliminary plan because it hasn't had a complete application." The net effect is essentially it's not binding, and they're still going to file their definitive.
That, that's fine. That works for us. Yeah, I expect it does.
So, you know, if that's the pleasure of the board, we'll write that up, and no incomplete application, lack of ANRAD, and they'll move on to file the definitive.
Sure.
Excuse us. Can I have your comment?
Please. If you could sit here, you're going to have to pull the microphone forward and identify yourself.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Meg Shi, and I'm an attorney with Save the Pine Barrens and Community Land and Water Coalition. I'd like to make a comment about the topography and the changes in the topography at this site. I'm very familiar with it. I've visited it a number of times. It's on the border of Plymouth and Carver, and it was the subject of an earth removal permit from Plymouth and from Carver in 2018. And the purpose of the earth removal, which is about 27 acres and taking out, I believe, close to a million cubic yards, was on behalf of Franklin Marsh and Gary and Craig Weston. The purpose was for building a cranberry bog reservoir, and it relates to water supply issues in Plymouth because there was a land swap with Plymouth whereby the Westons sold about eight acres of cranberry bog in Plymouth on Darby Pond. If you pull back and look at where this is located, it is almost a budding Darby Pond. It's not shown on any of these maps, I don't think. Okay, there you go. So Plymouth has a well on Darby Pond, and it's under a restriction for a cap. So growth in that part of Plymouth is limited. There's also a Zone 2 well that's very close on the Plymouth line, a Zone 2. So this has been extremely controversial in Plymouth. There was an appeal to DEP about the land swap, and the earth removal itself was obviously not necessary and incidental for a cranberry bog. It far exceeds what was necessary. I think it was a total of 13 acres of new cranberry bog and reservoir, but it's a 27-acre strip mine, and if you go out there and you see the extent of the topography alterations, it's being done by RICO. There's pictures that you can look at to see how they took down this once-pristine forest. There was an isolated wetland in there. In 2019, residents from Plymouth did ask the Carver Earth Removal Committee to look into this. We felt there were violations. We felt this was not necessary and incidental to the cranberry bog construction. We also asked the Conservation Commission to look into it and require an NOI. That never happened. There's been no stormwater runoff application, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for this project, as far as we know. So our concern would be moving forward, and you need to do whatever you need to do with the preliminary subdivision. But we want you to know that there is a lot of information out there about the extent of the topographical changes, and science, and we submitted an expert report on another project that's before you tonight, that shows that topographical changes like this and removing large volumes of sand and gravel first removes the protection for the groundwater, the sole source aquifer, and secondly, has the potential to change groundwater flow direction. So those wells in Plymouth, the Zone 2 that I mentioned, and whatever wells they're putting in here, all of the hydrology needs to be reassessed, because you can't use the pre-existing topographical information, as your own engineer, I think, alluded to, to determine where to put wells or what kind of water is available on the site, because that has changed. And when you do this kind of earth removal, as our experts stated, you are changing the rate of recharge, and you're probably increasing the groundwater elevation. So when you go to put in a septic system, the groundwater is higher than what it would have been, what would have been shown on maps, like the maps that show your groundwater elevations, prior to this excavation. So we would urge you to require a thorough hydrological report on this to determine the changes in the groundwater, the impact. The Google Earth images clearly show sand mining in the aquifer and sand washing on site. So these earth removal sites, they are digging into the aquifer for the sand because there is such valuable silica sand in the aquifer, and they are doing sand washing on site using water from these reservoirs to double wash the sand in order to get out the silk for septic. So I think there's a lot of issues here, and we'd urge the board to take those into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gleins, you did allude to site changes that were beyond what was what in the maps that were provided, or?
Yes.
One more quick point, Mr. Chair. Beals &amp; Thomas, the same firm, did the earth removal applications for Plymouth, so they are very familiar with the site and the extent of the earth removal that is happening there, so.
Thank you.
Yes, so specifically looking at Sheet 2, which is the existing conditions and lotting Oh, well, I guess, do the board members have a plan set for this?
Page 2 or Sheet 2?
Sheet 2 of the plan set.
This is the old Agway here, and it looks like cranberry bogs and cranberry bogs. And Lot 1, 2, and 3. Or A, B, and C. I think this is Lot C, and Lot A, and Lot B. It looks like, that's, that's just the property line. Okay, Mr. Gleins, if you would.
Yes, so as you can see at the end of the cul-de-sac, the topography isn't, existing contours aren't labeled on this plan. That was one of the comments that I made. But I can determine from the information that is there that there's a fairly steep slope that is shown at the end of the cul-de-sac currently, overlaying the proposed cul-de-sac location with the aerial image that's included in the submission package. It's clear that that slope location has moved further west. And basically, my primary concern is that there's been more cut done that overlaps more with the proposed cul-de-sac location, which would basically change the proposed grading of the proposed cul-de-sac.
Right, right.
Which potentially, to get the proposed grading that's currently shown on the profile, would require them to actually refill that area that may have been removed. So without updated survey, I can't definitively make that conclusion, but that is my current assessment of the preliminary plan submission.
Right. I had, I had concerns not being able to tell the extent of the wetlands on the property either, so that's, that's why we requested the, the ANRAD in regards to this.
All right. If you may.
I have nothing further. I appreciate the board's time and thoroughness in review. Thank you.
The board will accept a motion to disapprove this on the grounds of an incomplete application?
Who makes said motion?
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Deion, sorry, seconded by Mrs. Sardillo. Any further discussion?
Just to make sure, a yes vote is to deny the...
A yes vote would be to disapprove the application based on an incomplete application. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says yes.
John Gasky says aye.
Kerne Leachay says aye. Caneelie Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Segillo says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next order of business, preliminary subdivision plan, Borrego Solar Systems Inc., Cedar Meadow Drive, Zero Rear Ward Street, 19C Ward Street, Zero Rear Ward Street, Assessors Map 120, Lots 5, 6-1, and 7.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Dan Gagnon, professional engineer with Beals and Thomas. This project in preliminary subdivision is in the same state as the previous project. We came before you a few weeks ago now. There was some discussion then, discussion of the ANRAD. At this point in time, the 45-day window has lapsed, and we are looking to move forward with addressing the peer review comments in a definitive subdivision plan.
This one had an attached ANRAD order of conditions in regards to this property?
This project has an existing order of conditions on it, correct.
And I think part of our concerns in regards to this was the inaccessibility of certain properties in regards to this, the extensive wetlands. We didn't do a sidewalk on this one, I believe.
Is this the one we walked down?
One moment, please.
This is the Ward Street. Yeah, this is the one we, this is the sidewalk. This is the one we were with Dan Brojo.
Down on Way.
Yeah, off Wareham, yeah. Hammond Street and Wareham. Yeah, I think that's, this is the one that we did the sidewalk on, right?
I don't, no, we didn't do a sidewalk on this one.
Oh, this is the other. This is a different one. Oh, okay, no, it's on the backside of that.
We had five come in, so it's pretty easy.
Right, this one, I remember we had concerns because of the reservoir, it was, made certain, certain lots inaccessible.
Yes.
It went through Cran, the proposed road went through cranberry bogs and...
Yeah, okay, this is, yeah, this is the one where the cul-de-sac went way in and then two cranberry bogs.
So Mr. Bott, your recommendations in regard to this one?
Based on what Dave mentioned a minute ago, likely to do exactly what you just did a minute ago. The applicant, I understand, does not wish to proceed with any more discussions, any more meetings about preliminary plan.
Then there's no further action for the board to take?
The board can vote to deny, vote to disapprove, vote to approve with conditions, except they all laid to the same place, they get to come back with the preliminary plan.
All right.
But for consistency?
Yes, for consistency, for sure.
You might do what you just did.
Well, the board will accept the motion in regards to the Ward's, oh, did you want to, if you wouldn't mind keeping it brief?
I'd keep it brief.
I have one question for Beals and Thomas. Is this the location of the...
Everything has to be...
Oh, I'm sorry, through the chair. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Is this the location of the earth removal permit that was granted to E.J. Pontiff that is also the subject of a pending request for determination of applicability appeal with DEP?
If it's all right. Is this site also a site that is undertaking earth removal activities?
I am not aware of that situation currently.
Not specifically to that situation. Is this site also currently undergoing earth removal activities?
I am not aware of earth removal.
If I may, Mr. Chair, there was an earth removal permit granted for, I believe it's this location, it's hard to tell, but it was, there was a site visit there a couple of months ago with DEP, and the applicant claimed that the earth removal was normal improvement of land and agriculture, which it did not appear to be qualified for that wetlands exemption, and if there is an order of conditions on this, we have been unaware of it.
Well, it lists that the order of conditions were put forth by the Conservation Commission on January 27th of 2022, I believe. I'll just double check. I'm sorry. The applicant received an order of conditions from the Carver Concom dated January 27, 2020. All right. But frankly, I see too many issues and problems in regards to this, inaccessible lots, and because the road is proposed to go through the wetlands, I would think that the board would require prior approval through the Conservation Commission in regards to this project. But the board will accept a motion to approve Ward Street, Cedar Meadow preliminary subdivision plan.
Pardon for... I thought we were looking for disapproval.
Well, we can vote no to...
So I'll make a said motion to disapprove of it.
Your motion is to disapprove the preliminary subdivision plan for Cedar Meadow Drive, Ward Street, Carver?
Correct.
Made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Gasky. Mr. Dionne.
So a yes means we disapprove it, right?
That is correct.
Mr. Dionne says yea.
Yes, Mr. Bott.
In that decision that we'll be writing, are those, among those rationale, inaccessible lots and road traversing through the wetland?
It looks like it crosses over several wetlands and bogs.
John Gasky says aye.
Caneelie Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Segillo says aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. I appreciate your thorough review and your time. Thank you.
All right. The next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan, Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company, Zero Wareham Street Assessors Map, and lots numbers 127, 130, 128, 10, 128, 20, 128, 30, 128, 61, and 128, 15, 0.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Matthew Cody, professional engineer with Beals and Thomas, here on behalf of the applicant, Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company. We submitted this preliminary subdivision plan back in March, I believe, received some comments from Foster O'Neil in April that were recently responded to on June 6th, that responded to their comments, and we also provided a revised set of plans as we move forward towards the definitive stage, to note, just to note that we were, you know, cognizant of the comments that were out there and, you know, trying in a good faith effort to, you know, move things forward as we go towards the definitive plan.
Now, I noticed that you didn't have ANRAD, and we granted you an extension of time to complete your application.
That ANRAD is in process with Conservation Commission, to my, or if it hasn't been issued already. I believe that, I believe that was in, I think we just referenced that in our June 6th response.
Okay. So do you need more time in regards to completing your application?
Not, no. Similar to the previous, you know, we're just, we're looking to move forward towards the definitive plan at this stage.
Has an application for telephone polls been put through the select board in regard to this?
Not that I'm aware of, not at this stage. I believe, I believe, I mean, I believe that the intent, as we go to definitive, with all the, all the electric and cable, will be subsurface, but it'll be underground.
Okay. No, I, I realize that an application was put through the select board recently for a subdivision on Wareham Street, and we're, we're looking at two of them here this evening, and I was more curious in regards to this. Now, in regards to this one, having read Mr. Glines' report, you're, you're asking for a cul-de-sac that is half of the minimum required length in regards to the turnabout? I think it's 75 feet instead of the 150, is that correct?
Not to my knowledge, I guess I defer to Mr. Glines.
I'd have to...
I believe, you know, as far as the road layout, I think it was our understanding that there weren't any, or there was, oh, that was regarding vertical curves, not necessarily the diameter of the cul-de-sac.
The vertical curve?
Yeah, the, so with the roadway of this length and the existing topography out there, and, you know, in an effort to minimize the disturbance, we don't have enough length to run the vertical curves per the, per the regulation, so we're just looking for some relief from that.
No, my, my understanding then is the potential development on this property is, is rather extensive.
At this, at this point, we're only, you know, we're only looking for three lots.
Is there any reason, now Wareham Street is considered a scenic road in the, in the town of Carver, is there any reason that all three of these lots having the required frontage?
Well, I believe, as I'm looking at the screen, Lot B does not have frontage without, without the road, with the frozen road.
Mr. Bott, I wonder if you could scroll to page, page 2 of... Nope. Yeah, that's the one. Because where I'm looking at it, it looks like it is 580, 5,833.2 feet on Wareham Unless I'm mistaking the lots here, I'm looking at a...
No, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Lot, Lot A with 564 feet, Lot B with 5,833 feet, and Lot C here with, I'm gonna guess without being able to read it up there is...
580, sorry. 5,833.
5,833.2 feet. So I'm, I'm curious, because the, the numbers here are...
Looks like the 5,000 may be the entire length.
Might be the total extent of the property line?
Yeah.
Because it, it's very difficult to tell, but clearly all three properties have...
An affrontage.
Extensive frontage.
So why...
So what's the necessity for a subdivision road on one of the scenic roads in Carver? What, what can you do to defend this, this position? And it, it also looks like there's a structure in the proposed roadway, yeah.
And there's already a structure in one of the other lots.
So the, kind of those lot, so the, the one, I guess it's Lot A, was there to preserve the existing structures on site. The existing structure is going to be in the, in the road, if the road were to be developed, would be removed.
Well, the lot, Lot A appears to be all inside the building envelope, so that's the proposed building envelope, so I don't see an issue there, and it looks like it, it has 564 feet of frontage and 3.57 acres of land, so all, all three of these properties have the required necess, necessary frontage in regards to this, so I'm curious, as, as there's no other proposals here for, for housing, or I don't see any on my screen here in regards to the subdivision, I don't see that, that there's any necessity in regards to putting in a subdivision road in what, what's in the scenic area, so if I remember, Mr. Glines, you commented that the development potential is extensive in regards to this piece of property, so I think that the, the planning board should have some minimal understanding of the potential development, and not only that, if, if the development potential is as extensive it is, I don't see that reducing the minimum requirement of curvature on any roads would be a beneficial factor, because I would expect that any development off of this would be coming off of the proposed subdivision road as... So it's, I'm just a little lost and confused here, and I'm asking what, what the purpose is.
It's just, it's the applicant's desire to subdivide this lot as shown.
Sure, okay. That's fine. All right.
And again, if there's, you know, if there's concerns, or if, you know, there's certainly, again, we're only in the preliminary stage, as we move towards the definitive, if there's, you know, we, like, again, in the interest of time, we didn't lengthen the road during this, you know, during this process, but as we go towards the definitive, if that vertical curve issue is going to be something that's going to be a problem, we can lengthen the road a little bit and try to achieve those minimum lengths.
All right.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I guess regarding the comment with the vertical curvature, I agree with the applicant that, you know, potentially during the definitive plan stage, they could, I believe they could lengthen the road to the 600-foot length for a cul-de-sac that wouldn't require a waiver on the length, and then be able to provide the, you know, standard vertical curvature requirements. Regarding the future development options, essentially the comment there was to just reiterate to the board that due to the proposed lot sizes that will be created by this, the applicant and property owner could potentially further subdivide, you know, under other preliminary and definitive submissions, which is a standard comment that we make when, you know, the lots are above the minimum lot size requirements for the dimensional requirements for the district that they're in. And I guess, you know, similar comment regarding the ANRAD on this as some of the other preliminary subdivisions that have come through, reiterate that I think it's beneficial to the town to, as you're already requesting, get more information with the applicant on the proposed development before, you know, having the Conservation Commission review and approve an ANRAD.
Now, have you applied for an ANRAD at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Then you just need a little more of an extension of time, and maybe it would give you a chance to address some of the, the comments?
Correct.
All right.
But, but similar to, we're not looking to continue, we're looking just to move towards definitive.
All right.
Which, similar to the other subdivisions, as the town planner mentions, there's nothing binding here. We're gonna continue and carry through our comments that we've had for the preliminary submissions into the definitive, and make sure that those, these comments have been addressed at the next review stage.
Absolutely. All right. So the board will accept a motion in regards to preliminary subdivision, Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company, Zero Wareham Street. Again, the application is incomplete. Again, the application is incomplete.
Looking for a motion to disapprove?
Sure, I'm not looking for, I'm looking for the board to make a motion, so...
Right, good. I'll make a motion to disapprove based on incomplete of the application.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski, seconded by Ms. Sordillo, any further discussion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Connealie Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Who moved, who seconded it?
Uh, Mr. Gatski moved, and Ms. Sordillo seconded. Uh, next order is preliminary subdivision plans, Johnson Brothers Cranberries off Fosdick Road, assessors map fifty-seven, lots one and two, and two A, map fifty-nine, lot eight. Alright. If I remember correctly, these lots were under multiple...
Did I see you, no, someone had it out there. Yep. Do you want me to put mine out there, or John? Go ahead. Yep.
And so I seem to remember this was under multiple ownership at the time, that it...
Yes.
Okay.
Johnson Cranberries.
We're, Mark Flaherty from Flaherty, Estefani, and Plymouth, representing the Johnson Cranberry Company in its efforts to prepare a preliminary subdivision plan. And we, we were here last month, and at that time, we had not in our possession had an ANRAD, but it's subsequently been done, we sent it over to the town for the, for the ORAD that was, that was submitted.
And the issue of ownership? It, it was, at the time of the application, it was submitted under multiple ownerships?
Yes, it still, it still is, and the applicants are multiple owners, we have...
And we have, we have the application signed by, by the, the general partner, Francis Johnson. Okay. Andy, where are we on this?
Uh, so Fussin O'Neil has a draft review memo, but we never formally issued comments to the applicant or the town on, on this preliminary subdivision.
Alright, would you like, oof. You have a draft submission, Andy?
Uh, I have a draft comment letter that was prepared by one of my peers, but I wasn't able to complete my review of that prior to this meeting.
That's, that's, yep, I get it, you, you've had a lot on your plate, just like us this evening, um... Alright.
Well, I think it's important for us to, as we move forward towards possible approval of this subdivision, that Fussin O'Neil's comments are issued to us so that we could respond to them.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so that we know what we're facing with, so...
No question.
We would like to be able to come back, once we have those comments in hand.
Absolutely, no, I, I think that's, that's very important, um...
I, I'm confident I'll be able to issue these comments next week, I can't guarantee I'll be able to get them this week. But that should give the applicant time. I'd recommend to the applicant that they continue maybe two hearings out, so that'll give them time to review and address the comments. And then hopefully I'll be able to issue a, a follow-up comment memo with recommendations just regarding waivers and conditions.
Well, whatever works for you.
Yeah, if that works, two main, two main sentences, fine.
That'll be, that'll be July twelfth?
July twelfth, okay, thanks.
Um...
So we continue this till July twelfth?
July twelfth, that's fine, great, thank you very much, I appreciate your patience.
Yeah, I think I might have the next one, too.
Okay. Alright, next order of business is... This is Johnson Brothers. Preliminary subdivision Franklin Marsh LLC off Plymouth Street, assessors map thirty-eight, lot one OR, and map thirty-four, lot three OR. Alright, uh, where are we at?
So, Mark Flaherty again, there, we're in the process of having an ANRAD submitted to the Carver Conservation Commission to get that ORAD back to the board. I think maybe Fussin O'Neil might be in the same situation with their comments as the previous one, so I don't know where, what Andrew has, but I think it's probably very similar, and the submissions were similar, so we would like to be able to get those comments. Maybe again, July twelfth would work for us, if it would work for the board.
Yes, as the applicant mentioned, essentially the exact same situation as the other. Primarily, my main goal when I'm QCing and reviewing these is maintaining consistency from Fussin O'Neil with the comments.
Sure.
So if I can have another week to issue comments to the applicant, that would, if the applicant's okay with continuing to July twelfth again, that, that would work on, on my end.
That's fine, a, as I remember, we had questions about the accessibility of parcel one in regards to the wetlands that, that make it inaccessible through the frontage, and concerns about the extensive shared driveway and whether it is or isn't in the, the wetland zone, so, um, Mr. Glynn's?
Thank you very much, and if it's all right with the applicant, continue to July twelfth?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your patience today.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Do you need to vote on us?
Huh?
Do you need to vote on us?
No, um, on, on the applicant's request, we're extending these to the twelfth. Gotcha. So number seven has been continued?
Uh, next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan, AD Makepeace Company, Wenkinco, zero and forty-six Federal Road, assessors map one thirty-one, lot two dash four and four dash three. I believe it's been, a continuance has been requested to seven twelve twenty-two?
That is correct.
No need to vote on that, is it correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. Alright, next order of business is public hearing, continued on the application of DK Properties requesting a special permit and site plan review located at ninety-fourth Street in Carver, Mass, in the General Business Zoning District, and the applicant proposes to construct a sixty-five hundred square foot craftsman tradesman building with associated parking and utilities. The applicant is requesting a special permit to render more than ten thousand square feet of the site impervious. The total impervious area is approximately eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty square feet. Alright.
Yeah.
Unless you have it.
Uh, I, I do. Good evening, everyone.
Yes, sir, your name?
Uh, my name is Eric Dias, for the record, I am a professional civil engineer with Strongpoint Engineering in West Bridgewater, Mass, here tonight on behalf of DK Properties for ninety forestry. Just by way of a little bit of a history, we submitted this back on April eleventh, we were before the board on May tenth. At that time, we scheduled a site walk for May twenty-third, which some of you did attend. We received peer review comment on May thirty-first. At that time, I think you folks were kind enough to schedule kind of an, an off-schedule meeting for us for the seventh, uh, so we could try to get in here and make some of the purchase and sales deadlines that we have, as we discussed before. My client is purchasing this land from the town, and in terms of his PNS say that he needs to have certain approvals in hand before that. Unfortunately, just going back and forth with Mr. Glynn's, we weren't able to get everything that we needed in line for that meeting on the seventh, so we continued it to tonight. In short, we made some pretty general, pretty minor changes to the site based on Mr. Glynn's comments. Most of them have to do with landscaping and grading, minor changes to the grading, nothing that really impacted the intent of the design, nothing that really impacted the intent of the stormwater management, some more landscaping along the sides to help screen from the abutters and things of that nature. We also identified a small number of additional waivers that we needed, and we thought were appropriate to ask for, so we've enumerated them on the plans, and I'm glad to walk through any of those. As of Mr. Glynn's last comment letter, he had two things on the letter that he had requested of us. He said that all of our other comments were satisfied. One was some minor grading revisions, which we made, if you look on the plan, you know, over the septic system area, you'll see a one forty-seven contour, we revised that just to give a little bit better flow through that area, per Mr. Glynn's recommendation. And then the other thing was justification for one of our waivers with regard to peak traffic demand. And really, the short, abridged version of that is that this is going to be a headquarters for tradesmen that generally work off-site. So they're gonna show up in the morning and be out of there before eight o'clock, realistically probably before seven o'clock, and they're gonna come back at between three and five PM, drop off their stuff, and go back home. So we've only got fourteen parking spaces here, which is frankly probably more than we actually need to service this, but that's what's required by the bylaw. So we don't anticipate there being very much of a traffic demand with this at all, and all those times that we just talked about are sort of off-peak. So they wouldn't be during the morning rush or the afternoon rush when things get congested. And I think, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Glynn's, I'm sure he wants to highlight some points, but I think that satisfies the comments that the town had. So by all means, I'm glad to take questions or get into more detail on anything else that you guys would like to talk about.
Mr. Glynn, if you would?
Yes, as the applicant stated, the last memo that was issued to the town, and the applicant was dated June eighth. Since then, we did receive a response to those comments, and I reviewed that and responded via email to the town planner and the applicant, that they did in fact address those two outstanding comments regarding the recommended change to the grading, which was essentially to increase the slope of some of the proposed pavement outside of the garage bay doors, and some additional information to back up their waiver request regarding doing a full traffic analysis. As the applicant mentioned, the use of the property and the anticipated occupancy is fairly low, about fourteen parking spaces, I believe, are on-site, and that would be typically used to have employees come to the site at the beginning of the day, park, leave with whatever equipment they'd need from their respective shops, and then, you know, return and leave at the end of the workday. So I, in my professional opinion, it's not gonna have any notable traffic impacts that would require a more in-depth traffic study, other than the technical justification the applicant's provided.
And, Mr. Glynn, you felt there was sufficient room for trucks to be backing up into loading bays with the, the parking spaces as they are? Cause I noticed that it looks like it's under twenty-four feet in some areas between the building and the proposed parking areas. I'm just looking at page C two, and...
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Um, the dimension that you're seeing that's under twenty-four feet is twenty-one point one, that is actually to the overhang of the building. Right above that, there's a dimension of twenty-five point one, that's to the face of the building.
Okay.
So there would be at least a twenty-four foot drive aisle there, and we are showing, kinda page south, just below the building, a required loading area in that location, so anything that would be big enough that it wouldn't necessarily pull right into a bay, would pull into the loading area down there, and then the three-point turnabout.
Yes, now is one of the initial comments that the applicant addressed, originally they just had the one dimension for the twenty-one point one feet, and I asked them to add the secondary dimension to clarify the actual clear space, you know, to the face of the building at that location.
If I may, please. If you got a delivery, you'd have to back that truck in there?
Uh, most of the trucks that we anticipate delivering to this would be box truck size, so you'd be able to pull right in, and then you could come, if you were to come around the back of the building where there are two garage bay doors, you could three-point out by the dumpster and come right out of there. We don't anticipate deliveries from anything really bigger than a box truck.
Well, because of where the entranceway is situated, so close to the intersections of the other roads, it would... Were we to approve this, it would be limited to twenty-six foot length in, in trucks, there would be no articulated trucks. There's, there's no turnarounds, there's no ability to get in and out, and it would create serious traffic issues in regards to that.
I'm just conferring with my client now, and he's confirming that that doesn't sound like a problem, nothing that would come in here would be bigger than a box truck anyway.
Yeah.
So if that's something that the board wanted to condition, I don't think we take issue with that.
Now, do we have the, the side, um... I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, the side and the, the side buffers, um... Were those, where were we on that?
So there, there is some, a waiver request regarding the perimeter landscaping for parking lot. They're requesting a waiver to provide a, typically require a fourteen foot landscape buffer along the perimeter of at least three sides of the parking lot. So I did ask the applicant to increase the plant material that's proposed specifically along the north side of the property, which is plan right, and I believe, uh, looking at sheet C, C six is the proposed landscape plan.
And property lines bordering residential uses, is it twenty foot? Twenty foot in a business district?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I believe the only residential uses are at the rear of the property.
That is correct.
Both sides of the property are commercial properties.
Right, right, yes, no, um, but there's still properties that, there's still requirements under thirty-two, thirty-one?
As far as that residential, that's...
Okay.
I believe, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Glynn, I think it was one of your comments, that the buffer is based on actual number of parking spaces?
Well, it's increased.
Increased based on number of parking spaces, so when you do the math, our buffer would be required to be fourteen feet. It'd be, it's just how the math works out, so we did request a waiver from that, but we did provide supplemental plantings in lieu of that as well.
Alright, because it's...
All right. Because it, we'll be given a waiver for the residential property line too, because that's 100 feet, and I want to make sure that full screening from sound and light is there.
Sure. The residential property line buffer is 20, I believe the setback requirement is only 50 feet in this location, to the res, a landscape buffer to the residential? And if you look on sheet, if you go to sheet C2, you'll see that we did, we showed the landscape buffer setback line in the back, and we do adhere to that in this location. So we're not cutting trees within 50 feet of the back line, which is where the bylaw requirement is in this case.
Okay, because I was looking at bylaw 32, 33, which is the business zone, it's 100 feet. But I can see that you've added quite a few trees on the eastern side and a few on the western side?
Yes, sir.
And giant arborvitae's out front?
Yes, sir.
All right. I expect you're going to apply for a sign permit at some point?
If, if whatever sign we have doesn't conform by right, we will come and apply however we have to, for sure. We just haven't worked out the details of what's gonna be on the sign yet, because frankly, we don't know for sure who's moving in.
Also, I think you're asking 6,500 square feet, 6,500 square foot?
With the building.
Building, yes. At that point, I think we would have to prohibit any lofts or second floors in regards to that, because that's gonna, that's gonna put you into a different category.
That's fine.
Storage of household, of chemicals, hazardous chemicals?
Not anticipating it to be on-site.
So I would think that one of the conditions would be that only household quantities of hazardous materials can be stored at each of the buildings without a coming back for a special permit?
That's fine.
And, Mr. Chair, I did speak with the deputy fire chief, Jesse Boyle, regarding that emergency response plan. I don't know if he formally issued anything for this, but during our conversation, he confirmed that based on the craftsmen, tradesmen use proposed here, he wouldn't require the, you know, emergency response plan be written. But I do agree with the recommendation to include that as a condition, kind of limiting what type of materials would be left stored on-site.
If I may?
Please.
I think Jesse, in his, in his email, recommended that prior to an occupancy for any of the craftsmen, that they see building and fire prior to moving in. So rather, prior to any applicant taking possession of one of these sites.
Or changing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
They would need to consult, obviously consult the building commissioner, fire department as well.
Was there a traffic study down there?
We did not do a formal traffic study, because we feel that our volume of traffic generated by this is so low. As a practical matter, it wouldn't warrant a full traffic study. As we discussed, you know, we've only got 14 parking spaces. These people are gonna show up in the morning, they're gonna pick up their gear and get out of there before everybody else is waiting, and they're gonna come back in the afternoon before everybody else is done working, and drop their stuff off and go home.
Because it is kind of a busy intersection.
Admittedly, it is, absolutely, and I think that's one of the reasons why this actually fits very well, because we do have a low traffic demand, and it is gonna be off-peak hours. So we don't anticipate, it just is a practical matter, that this is gonna really congest that intersection any further than it is now.
Do we have the building designs that we could say what it's gonna look like?
We do. I think we submitted those. Tom, do you have those in your package?
I know you had them, but we asked for a couple of changes on it, so could you add those changes in there?
Yeah, let me, I have hard copy here. Let me pull out what I have.
Because we were talking about eliminating like a window and putting awnings over the other windows? Is that correct?
So I, I don't think we landed on an answer to that question. So what we have today, and I'll pass these around, is very similar to what we looked at at the site walk. It's five windows on that side facing the street, and that comes to 15% coverage. Now, I, I don't think we landed on final determinations on that, so if the board is more comfortable with the configuration, frankly, we think that five windows of that side is a little excessive. If we're more comfortable with four, we can talk about that. But I'll pass these around if that's okay.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that last sheet is the side that faces the street, side one over there? That is correct. The last sheet is the side facing the street. And as you can see, it's got the five windows through there. You know, in our opinion, maybe a little more than we need for this particular use, but if the board is comfortable with that, or if the board has a recommendation for something else that they'd like to see, we can be flexible on this.
Mr. Dion, what are you thinking, four windows with awnings?
That's it. I, I suggest it at the sidewalk, you know, I mean, you know, I'd like to make it look, you know, more presentable.
More attractive, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, because...
Than just a plain, five-window, blank-sided building, you know?
Yeah.
If I may, just to clarify, when you say four windows with awnings, are you talking one awning on the whole side, or are you yawning over each window?
No, no.
Over each window.
Just, you can break it, yeah, just something to break it up. Whichever we, either way, we just want to break up the facade from just being a flat.
No, each window has an awning over it. That's all, just to make it more presentable, you know?
Give us some clarity.
Yeah, we can, we can agree to that, if that's... Well, that's a thought, unless somebody else on the board here has an idea.
No, I, I really want to break up the flat monotony.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm thinking about.
And certainly, if that's something that we can condition, we would appreciate it.
And even you were saying, you thought five windows was too much anyways.
It's a little more than we need.
And that's gonna be what, someone's bay right there, right?
That's right.
Not, not everybody's bay, just one bay.
Yeah.
And eventually, the arborvitae should provide a majority of screening for...
Yeah.
Those trees grow about two feet a year. They come up very quickly and they get very full.
I mean, unless somebody on the board has a better idea, or?
No.
I think three windows would be sufficient. Seems like that's overkill.
How about two? No, I'm just kidding. Certainly, we can live with three.
Yeah, no, because I was just saying, it's gonna be one bay with all those windows in one bay.
Yeah, that's kind of silly.
You know?
I think three would look fine.
I just think it's gonna look silly with even four windows, because they're five feet tall. Dan, you gotta come up to the microphone, Tom. My name is Dan DeCesaree from DK Properties. With five windows there, five-foot wide by six feet tall, so five of those windows on the side of a 50-foot building, it's just gonna be all glass, and that's one person's bay. The least windows would look the best, and I'll put awnings over them, that's fine.
Yeah, take the, you know, the two middle ones, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, just make it look symmetrical, make it...
Leave the two end ones and the middle one, that's it. Get rid of the other two there. Yeah, that would look...
And a couple of...
Yeah.
I'll put shutters on them.
Shutters?
Awnings.
All right.
Like, I'm all for it looking good, too.
I watch HGTV. I think shutters would be good.
All right.
If I may, just one concern, I like the idea of the awnings, but just the height that the awnings and the windows are gonna be installed. I don't want them extending out and conflicting with the loading zone you have proposed there, so...
There is no loading zone on the street-facing side. It's just a...
There is. The area in the street is a small loading zone.
Oh, that's considered a loading zone?
It is, but we can limit how far the awnings come out from the building to no more than 12 inches or something like that.
Technically, there's, you can't have a loading zone in front of the building.
All right, so there is no loading zone?
There is no loading zone.
There is no loading zone.
So that leaves that comment.
There you go.
All right.
Good enough. But each, I should note, in lieu of loading zones, each bay has drive-in doors that would serve as the loading area for that particular bay.
Now, are they required to have catch basins for the loading bay doors?
Waterings?
I don't think it's, it's not required.
Okay.
And based on their grading, which we, they did address some comments on the grading, that they're pitching away from the finished floor at the bay doors, I would just, if we're removing the loading zone proposed to the front of the building, we should add a condition in. Really, it's a waiver request, I guess that we should finalize the language with the town planner for not providing that loading zone, and in the past, the town has approved using a portion of the bay itself as that loading square footage. So I don't object to that for this use.
Did we berm the trash collection area? Is that bermed?
I believe the trash collection area is bermed. It's got a fence and a containment berm around it. We also did provide a berman control plan, which I believe was your request, Mr. Chairman. So that's included in the package as well.
Any further questions or comments from the board?
We're gonna do three windows with awnings and shutters, or just...
Yeah, awnings and shutters, yes. And do we opt for the two outside in the middle and get rid of the...
I think as long as they're spaced...
Well, that's, that's why I said the two ends and the middle, right. That would look...
It doesn't necessarily have to be that, I think...
I got three windows with awnings.
Yeah.
Somewhat symmetrical.
Yes, please. I don't want two on the end, and then, you know...
Yeah. So do you guys still want the five-foot by six-foot windows?
I think you'll have to go with that, yeah.
All right, that's fine.
All right, the board will accept the motion in regard, yes, please, Mr. Bot.
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak or comment? Seeing none? I think we can close the public hearing.
Absolutely.
So the chair will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make said motion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Dion, seconded by Ms. Sedillo. Any discussion? Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says yea.
Mr. Gaski says yea.
Kneelie Shea says yea.
Kevin Robinson says yea.
Ellen Sedillo says yea.
The board will accept the motion in regards to Ninety Forest Street?
I'll make that said motion.
To, to approve?
To approve it.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Robinson?
Second.
Based on the, based on the conditions.
Yeah.
And waivers.
That's what I thought.
Yep, just wanted to make sure that covered.
No, I'll second. Seconded by Mr. Gaski. Further discussion?
Mr. Dion says yea.
John Gaski says aye.
Kneelie Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Thank you all for your time and your, your consideration. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Our next item is a continuation of a public hearing on the application of ENS Holdings LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review. Located off Spring Street, Lot Number One, Ricketts Pond Business Park. The project will consist of the construction of three commercial buildings located at Lot Number One, Ricketts Pond Business Park, off Spring Street. The lot will be comprised of three commercial buildings with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage systems, septic system, and utility connections.
Good evening, members of the planning board and Mr. Chairman. My name is Eric Schumaker, professional engineer with Mackenzie Engineering. I'm representing our client's ENS Holdings. So I think we, we last met in late April. We received a peer review letter earlier that week, so since, since we last spoke here, we issued a response to Mr. Glines' peer review and a revision to the plans. Just to go through the changes quickly. So the changes to the plan included some, some minor, we'll start with the existing conditions plan. So we did an updated topographic survey in the areas of Lots One and Two. These are shown by the red lines on the plan. It was easiest to just overlay this over the existing conditions we already had running for the site, rather than do an entire new topographic survey for the, for the subdivision. With that, we got Mr. Glines' review letter, like I said, and we added some minor revisions to the site plan. That included labeling and dimensioning out the overhead doors, as well as the bay doors located at the front of each building, adding the wall pack lighting. It's worth noting with the wall pack lights that, as your zoning bylaw states, wall pack lighting in the pedestrian areas won't be over 11 feet in height. We added ADA accessibility signs where they were applicable in front of the reserved handicap parking spots. And just some slight revisions to the site grading and a little bit more detail with spot grades on the grading and drainage sheet. The roof drains were then connected to the closed drainage system in order to capture any sort of stormwater flow associated with the roofs of each building. We included a landscaping plan as requested by the board, an erosion and sediment control plan. So just to speak to this landscaping plan a bit, we, you know, our first submission, we had a very crude landscaping plan with just some tree symbols and deciduous trees, so we expanded on that with a pollinator list that Mr. Bot forwarded to us. So we tried and focused some redbud trees in the buffers directly adjacent to the, to the buildings. We added a buffer of pussywillow, as well as pin oak trees around the boundary of the lot.
Is that weeping willow?
Yeah, weeping willow as well. I think the pin oak is along the frontage, excuse me. We, so moving on, we also included an emergency vehicle access plan. So this shows just the Carver 100-foot aerial fire truck navigating the site. It shows that the lot can be accessed by the fire truck, by the intermediate driveways, as well as that reserved emergency exit up there. That's directly west of the infiltration basin. Other than that, building elevations were added to the site plan, and we just really updated the drainage calculations and stormwater management plan as requested by Mr. Glines. We checked all the Massachusetts stormwater standards, and we went back and did, you know, recharge calculations. We resized one sediment for bay, and we basically just made sure everything was sufficient in regards to attenuation of the peak rates, recharge, and water quality. So a little bit more detail was added to the drainage plan. We submitted really just a formal stormwater management plan. BMPs, which are basic, maintenance and operations plans, were included as well towards the end there, and those were taken really from the definitive subdivision. So that, that really concludes what's changed since we last met. I'll toss it over to the board and answer any questions.
Now, you're supposed to have a 30-foot buffer on Spring Street, but is that, I don't really see trees or anything.
That's, the infiltration basin is, is in that area, directly adjacent to Spring Street.
All right, because that wasn't on the list of expected or asked for waivers in regards to roadway frontage. And the Spring Street is what, industrial?
Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. Spring Street Innovation Zoning District.
Yeah, if I'm there, for that particular item, I do have a comment under section thirty-two fifty-two, which is in the landscaping section of the bylaws. As the applicant mentioned, the bylaws aren't definitively clear that the vegetated buffer needs to include plant material for that whole width. But I concur with your assessment that some additional plant material to provide some screening from Spring Street should be provided. It's just something that I, I guess I, I can't formally cite.
It's thirty-two thirty-one. It says, "The roadway front property line shall have shade trees planted at least every thirty-five feet along the roadway. Planted buffed areas along roadways from property lines should be of the following minimum depth. Depth of each district is measured by the layout of the roadway and in, in this case, it's, it's thirty feet from the, from the main roadway." Because I expect that Ricketts Pond Drive is going, because there's, it's gonna be private, right?
Not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, because you're asking for waivers for a lot of public access. Waivers in regards to landscaping in, in, in the buildings, so part of the conditioning should we approve would be that there is, public is prohibited from accessing these, the public access. Is pub-, public is gonna be prohibited from accessing these sites. If you're asking for waivers and claiming that the public will not be accessing these sites, we're gonna take you at your word for it. But we're gonna have to see about upgrading, upgrading that buffer along Spring Street. I see you've added the fire lanes in here as per the fire department. And again, they had concerns about lofts or second stories and again, much like with our, our last project there, any second floors or lofts would be prohibited in these buildings. Mr. Glynn, I know you had some recommendations in regards to this.
Yes, so there is still a handful of outstanding comments for this proposed project. I won't go through all of them tonight unless the applicant.
No, that's okay. They need, they need more time to.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
But the, I guess I do wanna point out a couple of primary concerns. I guess, one of which being, I guess, a follow-up condition of approval from the definitive plan submission, which required some additional test pits be conducted actually within the infiltration basin themselves. We did receive test pit information that was reviewed and supervised by the Board of Health Agent for the septic system and were able to use that information to verify vertical separation from seasonal high groundwater on site. But I think when, I think prior to issuing a building permit as a, you know, at least as a condition of approval, those additional test pits within the infiltration basin itself should be conducted. And I think that could easily be done by the applicant when they're disturbing the currently installed basin, when they're upgrading the sediment four base to receive the discharge from this particular lot. One of the other concerns is regarding the thirty thousand doll-, thirty thousand gallon, excuse me, cistern that's proposed. This is part of the fire protection system for the buildings. I have discussed this with the deputy fire chief and from emergency services point of view, they have no objection to the tank and how it's gonna be tied in for fire protection from a site civil standpoint. I have concerns with the location, the down gradient slope, which is proposed to be two to one, and then also the retaining wall that's proposed at the toe of that slope and just, really just general slope stability there.
Yes.
And part of that is the type of retaining wall that's proposed is a modular block wall. Those type of walls retain some of their strength, usually from being tied back into the slope. So I think it'd be more appropriate if the layout is still, you know, constructed as proposed that the, at least the retaining wall type has changed, most likely to a cast-in-place concrete wall. It would have some more, it would have its own strength. It wouldn't rely on the slope for stability. Ultimately, you know, I, we don't have enough information at this stage to say that it won't be stable, but I would highly recommend that there's a condition that during the building permit process that a certified geotechnical engineer from the applicant review that approach and stamp that and have, you know, Fussin O'Neil as well as the building official review that. I think it's feasible that the applicant could relocate the location of the cistern further northeast, actually closer to Lot Two, potentially reduce the proposed steepness of that slope. Potentially get it down to three to one, which actually segues into another comment about just stabilizing that slope. It's currently proposed to be stabilized with lawn and although you can physically stabilize a slope with lawn, it's more susceptible to erosion and also maintenance is difficult once you get beyond a slope of three to one. And just given the nature of the soil in the area and the load of the cistern itself, I'd rather see that slope, proposed slope revised, so it's less steep and potentially revise the stabilization approach for permanent stabilization.
We, 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 we did, we received updated topographical information in regards to.
We did, and as the applicant mentioned, it's shown on the revised plans now. Reviewed that against the approved definitive plan approval. Essentially, they're currently at about subgrade or one foot below proposed finish grade for this lot. So they've, there's, there was undulating tech-, topography on this site. As a lot of people that are familiar with it know, a lot of varying hills and things that have since been cut and removed for that site. I'd say averaged about been a forty-foot cut down to get to where the subgrade is that they're at now. Obviously, that's a notable volume of material that was removed, but I know there was an earth removal permit granted for this site. And the proposed topography of the previously approved subdivision road as well as on this individual lot isn't, isn't excessive for, it's appropriate for the type of use in the, you know, onsite grading for stormwater management and access. Just my primary concern is really kinda where their grading intersects with the property lines specifically on that cistern end and just having that be a lot steeper than I, I think it really should be. And, trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, currently, the applicant's only provided elevation drawings for one of the three buildings that's proposed at this location. I understand that the applicant hasn't progressed the design of the other two buildings. Ideally, I'd like to see the applicant provide elevation drawings for those, at least to give the board a clearer representation or, you know, confirmation that the other two proposed buildings are gonna mirror the same aesthetic as the one proposed building that's currently there. But I would, I am recommending a condition that, you know, those elevation drawings be provided to the town planner, Fussin O'Neil, at the very least during the, the building permit review process so that, you know, we can confirm that the planning board's intent of approval is, is followed through, through the building permit process.
Proposed landscaping front, in front of the buildings is at what depth?
It's about sixteen feet, but that's including the right-of-way, so it's the sixteen-foot landscape island. I don't know exactly what portion of that is on the lot. I don't know what the applicant representation does.
If I had to estimate, it's, it's probably about four feet. I believe that's in ten, a ten-foot island. I can confirm that. I don't have the number.
And it looks like the sidewalk was originally proposed on that side of the street?
The west, western side of the street. Or the eastern, excuse me, the opposite side from, from lots one and two.
And how many acres is it, four?
Four acres.
You don't think you can fit a bike rack in there somewhere?
I, I can discuss it with our client. I believe that was a waiver we originally requested and just trying to keep that in line with the other lots. We got permitted the four A lot out front.
Right, gas, get expensive. I think you're gonna see a lot more people riding bikes around. And on the north side, what's your buffer there at?
It's approximately eight feet on site and then Lot Two has another eight feet. So combined between those two, there's sixteen feet, but they do need a waiver for not providing the onsite sixteen-foot width at that location.
It should be sixteen foot on each.
Per bylaws, yeah, without a waiver.
I would expect the trash will be bermed and a vermin control plan will be filed with the Board of Health?
Yeah, there will be a Kipco berm around the trash area.
Excellent. Any questions?
Could you tell me what happened with the stake in out the sidewalk?
Staking out the sidewalk?
Yeah.
The proposed.
Buildings.
Corners of the buildings, I believe, were staked by our survey crew.
Well, there wasn't enough stakes out there to determine what was what. I don't know who you sent down, but they had no clue of anything either.
I, I talked to our survey crew and in areas where he couldn't climb up the bank, I believe he just set up the face of the building.
Right, because there were, there were multiple piles of materials that kinda, and then what we thought was the roadway wasn't the roadway. Things along those lines. But I expect we'll, we have another one ahead of us. We might consider.
Doing another sidewalk down there?
Another sidewalk.
Because we thought one was a road and it wasn't even a road, so we have no clue how all this is fitting in there other than just looking at your map, you know? I mean, it's nice to get an idea what it's gonna look like and how everything's set up in there. And I understand the road that they're using isn't even the road that's part of the parking lot that they're using right now? Where the way station is?
Yeah, the way sta-, you can see.
Is actually part of their parking lot on that building?
It's in a corner of, of the southern portion of the parking lot.
Right, so there was nothing staked out. We had no idea. We're guessing.
Okay.
And I'd like to know where the, the, the actual other side of that, where the road is in the fifty feet to determine how close you are to the other side. I mean, that would be nice. I mean, every other sidewalk we go to, we have no problems. They got the four corners marked out. Property lines are marked out.
So in, in areas where there's no soil stockpiles, we can see if we can add more stakes?
Yeah, give us a more defined area to look at, you know? Other than what's around that pile? I mean, we, we couldn't see any stakes, nothing.
It was, it was very confusing and certainly unsure of where the road was, right?
I couldn't tell if we're look-, looking at the end of one building versus the roadway to the other building. There was nothing there, nothing definitive to say what was what.
Okay, and, and by roadway, you're, you mean?
Yeah, in between the buildings here, you know, how you, right in between like building one and two.
Ricketts Pond Drive?
Nope, nope.
Oh, so you mean the parking?
Yeah, so you four.
Okay.
Yeah, and then you building in back, there was like nothing for the back building. I think you had one stake out there. And then he was talking about something, how to go in the banking up there. He wasn't sure exactly. He did mention something about going in the banking. And I believe from what I'm looking at is my, some kind of filtration or something that was gonna go in the banking there. He had no idea.
The cistern tank?
Probably that.
Yeah, we, we, as far as I understand, we were just asked to stake corners of the building, not the parking lot or the cistern.
Well, yeah, but you didn't even have the buildings, the corners of the building staked out. You had like two stakes on one building, two stakes in another building. That's it.
And, and we should have an idea where the roadway is too. Now, where are the utilities coming in?
Utilities are coming from Ricketts Pond Drive.
I mean, do they come in off Spring Street, existing utility lines or?
Utilities that, that are feasible to come in off Spring Street, like the, the electric conduits will come from Spring Street.
Is there existing lines on Spring Street? Yes?
Is any of it gonna be underground?
Correct.
No, all, all of it's gonna be correct, yeah.
Make a show.
All right. So I think we should set up a, a second sidewalk?
I would.
All right, then we'll do that and we'll incorporate it.
What, the second one?
The, site three, Lot Three, sector?
Yeah, we've got Lot Threes coming up on the agenda.
So we can do it all together? That's all right?
Yeah, I'd venture to say that probably makes pretty good sense.
Will we be able to walk set two?
It was, it was piles everywhere. It was very difficult to.
Yeah.
It was kinda more of a general.
This is Lot Two.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we weren't even really able to do Lot Two either, so we should do all three of them.
Well, yeah, I, I would, we'd do them all together. And then, Mr. Glynn, you need some more information?
I, yeah, I'd like to get a, another response to comments from the applicant to close up some of the additional items in my latest memo.
If I may just clarify a point mentioned earlier, the southernmost building will have a second floor, as I understand it.
That's going to put it into a different category and that's gonna require a sprinkler system.
Yeah, that's why the cistern was proposed.
Right, I realized that the, the first building was required, requiring it.
So there's, there's two seventy-five hundred square foot buildings and then one, it's a twenty thousand square foot of the building, two. And I did speak with the deputy fire chief and he was okay with the proposed fire protection system.
Okay.
There'll be further review during the, the building permit process.
Right, because when I read the fire department le-, letter, it said that he had no idea if those buildings were having second floors.
Yeah, so I guess it, the board could write a condition that buildings one and three would not have mezzanines or, or second stores in them, because they're, they're right at the threshold right now for requiring sprinkler system. So increase in square foot beyond that would put them in that category.
Hazardous waste storage?
We don't anticipate any hazardous waste on site.
All right, so continue. All right, so continue this till, what's a good time for you? I didn't know. I thought you might have another.
Excuse me?
I thought you might have another comment, but, so we will be continuing this to, what do you feel is a good time to?
Can we do the, the meeting in two weeks?
How's that sound, Andy?
I guess, yeah, pending getting response to comments, which I'm sure you already been working on. I think it's reasonable we'd be able to turn around or review, another review memo by the twelfth.
Okay.
So we're talking about, I think we're talking about June twenty-eighth at this point.
Oh, okay.
Run the fourteenth, so we're talking about continuous till two weeks?
Oh, two weeks, not two meetings?
That's what I'm trying to get a clarification. We're talking about-
Oh.
We, we can do June twenty-eighth, I, I believe.
Well, will you have time enough to, 'cause have you done a sidewalk?
No, well, yes, but not within, you know, the last month or so, so. I mean, if, if the applicant wants to continue to that date, you know, would be happy to try to respond to their, respond to the comments prior to that, but you may not have time to review my letter, I guess.
We can notify the applicant if, if we have issues. All right, so, June twenty-eighth? Now, this is a public hearing.
Hey, I won't be present at that meeting. I'd have to phone it in.
Okay.
Right, so before we continue?
Yes.
You just mentioned it's a public hearing.
Yes. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment? I, please? I know we received some comment letters, which will be forwarded to our engineer also to add to his stack of things to review.
Sure, yes. I think a lot of people would like their comments, but.
It's a public hearing. Everybody's welcome.
So my name is Meg Cheeun. I'm here on behalf of Community Land and Water Coalition, project of Save the Pine Barrens, and many of our members live in Carver, including abutting the site. It's hard to segment these three buildings, the three projects that are on the hearing tonight, from the underlying violations of the subdivision rules and regulations. It doesn't seem like you can approve this when you have underlying violations, which were discussed at length at your May twenty-fourth meeting. Among those violations includes removing all the trees prior to the subdivision plan application in 2018 and starting the work without an earth removal permit also in 2018. So this is commercial earth removal. It's not a subdivision road construction, as they claim, by any interpretation of the very well-established Massachusetts case law. This is not necessary, an incidental earth removal for a subdivision road when you look at the scope and scale and duration of the operation. The operation is apparently nowhere near complete, maybe about halfway complete, the earth removal. There's work that has extended already into Plimpton, we believe, and there's more, about three hundred thousand cubic yards to come out from Plimpton using the subdivision road out onto Spring Street. And we understand there is no earth removal permit or tree cutting permit with Plimpton. That's a question to be clarified. And then there's also the existing earth removal operation on the abutting lot, the Marab Trust Lot, which is gonna go around the north side of Ricketts Pond. That's an earth removal permit that is under appeal. There's a lawsuit pending brought by abutters of the project to prevent further harm to them from the earth removal. So there's really no, no clear idea here of what the entire earth removal operation consists of, which of course impacts the ability to assess the impacts to the groundwater and how that might impact any onsite wells that are gonna be used to serve the buildings in the subdivision. There's no idea of, or any plans that show all of the buildings and what are all of the needs for water and all of the needs for septic and stormwater drainage, et cetera. Along those lines, there is also with the Conservation Commission pending a demand for enforcement of the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town General Bylaw for the land that this site is on. Lot three abuts Ricketts Pond Road, I mean, Ricketts Pond itself, and we have questions about the amount of silt that has been flying off into Ricketts Pond and how that has contaminated the pond. So, again, the cumulative impacts. There's also questions about the vernal pool that has been impacted by these projects. And as our engineering report shows, that's a report from one of the nation's leading hydrologists, Scott Horsley. He provided that to our nonprofit group. It's his opinion that the extent and scale of this earth removal, which isn't even complete yet, has definitely changed the recharge, which means, as I mentioned earlier, that the groundwater elevations are higher than they would be because there are no trees. Fifty percent of precipitation is absorbed by trees or evaporate, transpirated. And so by removing all the trees and all this earth from the site, that means fifty percent more of the rain is gonna go into the groundwater, meaning it's gonna make the groundwater higher. And we'd be happy to have, you know, an expert come and talk to the board about that. So again, that's gonna impact all of the septic systems on the site, all of the drainage of the site. It's gonna impact the, abutting properties and people's wells and flooding in their yards. So, you know, in a sense, looking at this and looking at the notion of approving site plan review and special permits for these three lots, when the operation has been in violation of the earth removal bylaw documented time and again with the Earth Removal Committee, the Wetlands Protection Act, your own regulations, the site plan review requires that the project and the site be in compliance with all zoning laws of the town. So you have a pro, three projects tonight that are located on land that's in violation of the bylaw. So we would urge you to not reward the scofflaws who have basically duped the town into thinking that this is a subdivision road construction project when it's clearly an earth commercial, an industrial earth removal operation. To take action under your own subdivision rules and regulations allows you to take enforcement action and to certainly, in any event, require a full hydrological assessment of all the earth removal, whether it's in Plimpton, on Marab, and how it's going to affect not only the abutting residential wells on Ricketts Pond, but also the public water supply wells that are located. In Plimpton, for example, there's a public water supply well supplying water for Cisco. And if it is in fact true, as our engineer speculates, the groundwater was flowing in a westerly direction towards Cisco's well, and now that might not be true and it might be flowing in the opposite direction. So how is that going to affect the regional availability of groundwater for public and private wells? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Please step, step on up. I believe the lady in back had her hand up first. I'm sorry.
I'm not quite sure if I'm supposed to be speaking now or-
Nope.
Eric gets to lot two, but this woman basically called me a scofflaw, I believe, and I believe Mr. Chairman-
Could you address your, all the people who you were on?
Oh, I apologize. I first should comment. Peter Sprague, my husband?
Sorry?
My husband, Peter Sprague, was in a horrific accident and is in a hospital right now, so I'm here to speak on the other half of the, Peter and Patricia Sprague. Eric has done a lot of work with us. Our attorney, Mr. Chairman, never told me we were breaking the law when we purchased lot two and two B. I believe I'm number ten on the list this evening. I'm sorry, you, I'm super emotional. I have been up for about ninety-six hours.
Take your time. That's okay. I'm sorry to hear about your husband. Please take your time.
And thank you. I have learned a tremendous amount in this process because you haven't met my husband yet. He is very particular and meticulous. And Eric could probably smirk to that comment that I just made because I know about catch basins, even though they are not legally required. We are, we proposed to put them in. I know what the plantings and trees and, and what the state requires versus what will grow well versus what has been suggested. We have a tremendous amount of money, time, effort, sweat equity, you name it, into lots two, which are proposed two buildings and lot two B, to be discussed at a later date. I one hundred percent, we're about to lose our commitment because it has taken so long from the bank. So I am here to plead that whatever we can do to move this forward, not being a scofflaw, that you would take into consideration that it's not just some people looking to ruin wetlands. We, we have no drainage. We, I mean, wetlands. We, it's been discussed and re-discussed, and I know I'm rambling now, but you needed to know this is more human than just lot two and whatever. And we legally bought that land and have paid Eric, which he can get to in a moment, but I just couldn't sit back another minute where she's saying lot two is categorized and all the same, because I know we have dotted a tremendous amount of i's and cross some t's. I was here last month at the meeting. I do understand there are many challenges and steps that need to be taken legally for good reason, and I thought we were in, in with a forward progress motion. If I can answer any other questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Dan Frinney from Carver Concerned Citizens. We have some issues ongoing with this site. The site continuously is removing sand. It is not ready for development. Through the board, we would like to know when the sand removal is going to stop. We'd like to know how much more sand is coming out of that and when would the sites be ready? Because we look at this, I drive by it every day, and I can't understand how somebody can build on a site when it's mounded with loads and loads of sand. The other question I have for the board, I'm sorry, I had my notes here. We'd like to know if we could get an account, how much land or how much earth removal has been done by an independent. We're asking the board if they can step forward and have somebody review this and tell us exactly how many tons of earth removal has happened on that site. Because, again, I've been to all the meetings and this is a continuous thing. We continuously complain. There's numerous lawsuits against this, not against the buyers, but against the developer himself who's taking this land. So we're asking the board to step forward. And again, I hear tonight that you all did a site review, but there's mounds of dirt and sand where there is supposed to be buildings, and nobody can tell us when that's gonna be finished and how much more is coming out of that site. So for the board, I'm asking the board to look at this as a whole, and I can't see giving permits when you can't even tell where the roads are, where the, where the lots are, where anything is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from, please step forward?
Good evening. My name is Annie Hayes. I am affiliated with Save the Pine Barrens and One Water. I live by the Wewy Antic River in Wormham on an old farm, and I am very concerned about the awareness and the bringing to the fore our sole source aquifer that we all share. And I would like to know how far from the aquifer the lowest built surface is on these buildings, this project, through you?
I would, I think because we've just received the latest topographical information, I, I don't think we can answer that. Could we, Mr. Glynn?
Not at the moment off the top of my head in the meeting, but I can, I'm trying to take as comprehensive notes as I can, as well as review the meeting minutes. And that's certainly something that we could formally address in our next comment letter.
Yeah, because we've only just recently gotten the most up-to-date topological, topographical maps of, so we haven't. And we still have to do test pits and a variety of other things to determine that.
The other issue I'd like to bring to the fore is that of PFAS's, PFAS chemicals. I sometimes hear eight hundred, sometimes eight thousand, but they're forever chemicals that are leaching into the water system and into our cells, into our food, into just about everything about our society. And when you have a sand substrate and buildings are built on it and commerce is happening on it, there's a lot of opportunity for chemicals to leach in. And these are bioaccumulating. They mass in the body. They have been implicated in liver cancer and kidney cancer, and it's a very serious issue. And it's estimated now that approximately two hundred million people in this country have them in their body. So Massachusetts just put in some regulations in April this year. Attorney General Maury Healy has sued thirteen manufacturing companies. But here and in every local board, there is the opportunity to become very aware of them and understand how vulnerable our only drinking water source is. And believe me, to remediate this problem, Chatham just expended six million dollars to clean up around two wells, and you don't really clean up. I'm not exactly sure, haven't investigated that. But six million dollars for just that situation. So it really needs to be taken seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Obuchinski, developer of Ricketts Pond Business Park. Honestly, don't know where to start because I feel that I've done everything here completely by the book. I went to the Earth Removal Committee when I first bought the property, received an earth removal permit. Shortly after, we applied to the planning board for subdivision approval, which we received. And the fact that we've done a lot of earth removal there, yes, but it's dictated by the amount of sand and gravel that was there on the site. And if you read the Earth Removal Bylaws, an approved subdivision, earth removal is exempt. So I'm sure you can all read, and I believe Mr. Glynn's even mentioned that in his review letter. He's purposely run out of his way to research the Earth Removal Bylaws, and I'd like him to comment on that as well. If you could read the review letter, that paragraph, please?
Excuse me, Mr. Obuchinski, this is the public part of the hearing. All comments will be made to me.
Yep.
And, yes, in, in the records, it says, and I specifically pull it out, but more or less that earth removal permits aren't required under a, an approved subdivision plan.
Correct. So you agree with that?
I, I agree that to a point, but, you know, also, it also states further on that, that the planning board has to minimalize any, any, any earth removal and topography changes. So this isn't the court of law, and I, I understand there's a lot of things going back and forth.
And, and that's why I went through the planning board, had a thorough review of the subdivision. All the lots were, had proposed grades shown on them, which we followed to a letter. And McKenzie Engineering would verify that we were within a foot-
Mr. Glynn verified that earlier this evening.
So the fact that there's some stockpiles on, say, lot one, that's kind of between the buyer and, and myself. He's gonna be upset with me if I don't get those piles off the, off the lot so that he can build. And I'm sure, as a member of the planning board, you guys would have- And I'm sure as a member of the planning board, you guys would have foresight to look at a wide-open piece of land with some piles on it and be able to understand where the buildings go. Not every site that you look at would have the luxury of having the trees all cut and leveled out. Takes some imagination sometimes. I'm sure you look at wooded sites that still need to be, that would need planning board approval, but you're not requiring all the trees to be cut down, the land stripped, and the buildings all staked before you can realize what's going to be there. That's the purpose of looking at on a plan with dimensions. And I know for a fact the buildings were all staked there except for the back building. And I'm not sure when the planning board went out, but it's an active construction site and stakes get knocked over. I was there the day McKenzie Engineering staked those buildings out. And it was very clear where the first building was, the second building. The only one that may have a question on was maybe the back building because there was a pile of material there. And I don't think it's fair that the applicant should have to keep paying for someone to come out and look at something that's clearly shown on the plans. But that's my opinion. And then as far as stockpiles there, let's say it's an ongoing construction site. And we can only take material out of as fast as we have buyers for that material. And as you know, I was back before the board a couple of weeks ago. And because of COVID, we received an automatic 462-day extension. And that's why it's taken so long, believe it or not. COVID did impact our business. My permit allowed me to take 50 loads out a day on my subdivision, 50 loads a day on the marab piece. And if you look at the records that I submitted to the earth removal committee, we've averaged since we started in 2018, only 23 loads a day. Because you have issues with the winter where you don't do anything. And just because the winter's slow, I can't make up, if I don't do 50 loads one day, I can't make it up the next day and say I'm going to do 100. An average 23 loads a day. The earth removal committee receives reports from us quarterly. Public record. You can go down there anytime and research the records. And we're right on track with the 550,000 yards we've been approved through in Carver on the subdivision side, and we're right in line where we should be on the marab parcel. As I said, every truck that goes out there, there's a ticket for it, it's weighed, and we do the reporting to the town every three months religiously and send them their check religiously every three months. Pine Barrens Group have made a number of false accusations against us. They've accused us of burying stumps on the property. The week that they made this claim, I paid a subcontractor over $35,000 to come in and grind the stumps that were stockpiled on Plimpton side of our property. You can go look at it anytime you want. There's a pile of stump grinding there. There's probably thousands of cubic yards that we're going to make into a mulch product. I have not removed any material from the Plimpton side as they allege. It's material that I received permission from Plimpton to be able to stockpile on the Plimpton side to kind of speed up our ability to finish the roadway so I can deliver lots to the end buyers. So I'm incurring the cost of picking that material up that's in the way of finishing our roadway, stockpiling it in Plimpton, and then having to remove it at a later date. And we are screening topsoil that's going to be needed for all the lots when we landscape them. I've agreed to build a berm, a Long Spring Street. Materials are dumped there. We're going to shape it and landscape it, put a sprinklers system to it. Back in 1995, when my dad passed away from cancer, he was involved with a southeastern sand and gravel operation in Kakesin. It was a 300-acre gravel pit. And I was tasked with cleaning that up and developing it. And Mr. Bott was involved with a lot of permitting there. And I remember one of my first meetings that I went to that the planning board basically said that some sites are undevelopable. And I said, give me a chance. And in the end, we built over 200 house lots there, and it's one of the most desirable subdivisions on the South Shore. Someone puts a house in there for sale, it's gone the next day. And my intent here is no different. First-class work, street-lined trees, streets lined with trees. All my buyers are people I've known and are going to do a great job. They're going to maintain their property well. There's not going to be a bunch of junk out in the yard. And it'll be something that will generate a huge amount of tax money for the town of Carver, which they desperately need. And I feel that, as I said, I'll maneuver through the obstacles that Save the Pine Barrens or whatever their offshoots are, we'll battle that out, but it shouldn't affect my end buyers here. Because they are hard-working people like you and I. They put on their work boots every day and they go to work. And it's unfair to penalize them by just dragging this whole process out. As I said, there were very few comments, particularly on the Sprague lot. I think there were more housekeeping issues, but that shouldn't hold you guys up from taking a vote on it. And the fact that there's some stockpiles of material there, I'll move them next week if I have to. But I don't have a buyer for the material. And if necessary, I'll truck it all into Plimpton and move it again. But I'm not going to hold them up as far as putting a building up on their site. So that's about all I have to say tonight.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to be so long-winded.
No, no worries. Anybody else from the audience? All right. Seeing none? Please keep it very brief.
I will. I just want to respond to the, first of all, I wasn't calling the buyer scofflaws, just to clarify. And as to the stumps, there is a video that is referenced in our materials showing that stumps were buried apparently and then dug up and now being mulched, I guess. So there are some activities that have happened on the site as well as digging into the groundwater at the location of lots one and two, and then filling that back in. So I think there's a lot of questions about the subsurface conditions on the site.
Thank you very much. All right.
I have a question for you.
Do you have one comment, please? These people, oh, I'm sorry.
No, please.
The Pine Barrens Group has been
You have to reintroduce yourself.
The Pine Barrens Group has flown drones over.
You have to reintroduce yourself every
I'm sorry, Peter Opochinski, developer of Ricketts Pond Business Park. The Pine Barrens Group people have flown drones over our operation. And in one of their wonderful YouTube videos, they focused the drone on our stump grinding operation. Stumps weren't buried, but you can't tell from a drone sight. They were clearly in a pile that was probably 15 to 20 feet tall. And I'll have, I probably have two or three witnesses in here that would testify to that and agree. They weren't buried. They were in clear sight, never had the intention of burying them. They're sitting in a stockpile like other piles of sand and gravel. And when we accumulated enough of them from clearing the land, and we knew we were going to move ahead with the marab piece at one point in time, when all the trees were taken down and the stumps were consolidated in one pile on the Plimpton side, we had a stump grinding contractor come in. If you look at the drone video that you'll see, which they want to make you believe I was digging a hole, the machine is actually on top of a stockpile. And I really don't like when someone misrepresents the facts. And that's exactly what they're doing here, just to kind of draw the headlines and, you know, whatever goal their end goal is here. But I'm not going to stay here, stand here and get smeared by the Pine Barrens Group for something that I didn't do.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, I will accept the motion to close. Oh, I'm sorry.
I got a question for Andy. Subdivision. Are they supposed to put like a rough road in there when they start building? Or is it, can it remain sand that whole time upon building?
So traditionally, the subdivision road is installed with the utilities and a binder course, providing full frontage to the proposed lot for development prior to site plan approval for that lot. Right now, a portion of Ricketts Pond Road, as you've seen from your site inspection, has been constructed. Fussin O'Neill was involved in the construction administration oversight along with the town's operations maintenance department when that portion of the road was installed. And the applicants addressed, you know, the comments and concerns that Fussin O'Neill and the town had installing that portion. In both Fussin O'Neill's memos for Lot One and Lot Two, we recommend, you know, that the rest of the road is installed to provide frontage for those sites. And potentially as a condition of approval that that's done prior to a building permit being issued for the buildings themselves. So the town did approve definitive plan, definitive subdivision plan for the road. And I think in conjunction with the data and meeting minutes from the earth removal committees, that can provide some insight to the board and the citizens of the town and the butters on, you know, what the proposed extent of the cut in development is that was previously approved on the definitive plan.
So it does have to have a slight paving of a road.
Typically, you just install the binder course, which is the first course. And then you wait to install the surface course until everything's developed.
So it's just a point I'm getting to is because he's got an extension for one year, still hauling gravel and sand out of there. Isn't that going to destroy the road if you're going to try to build a building in there? And that doesn't even mean that he's going to be done in a year because he could also get another extension for a following year. So that would say you couldn't, if he needed that extension, you couldn't put that binder road in. Therefore, you couldn't build those buildings in there, correct?
It's definitely, I will say it's, this is, it's potential that the road's going to be damaged as they continue to haul out. The town, as I understand, was the bond established yet for the, so the town is protected by a bond that the applicant has provided that covers the remaining cost for installing the full extents of the subdivision road that was previously approved. So that would be all the remaining utilities, base gravel, base course, patuminous pavement, binder course, as well as a surface course. And essentially, the, anytime the developer requests a drawdown on that bond, the town will request that Fussin O'Neill do a site inspection, confer with the operations and maintenance department and confer that everything that's been constructed previously is still in good condition or replaced prior to drawing down that bond amount. So that's kind of definitely related to the site plan review and special permits. But there's a separate mechanism to protect the town to make sure that the subdivision road is maintained and, you know, constructed appropriately.
And if I may, and repaired if damaged. Because before you put that final coat of asphalt on, they're going to make sure that the subsurface of the road, the binding course of the road is sufficient. So there's a bond in place. Essentially, they're using, they're driving across the parking lot, as you pointed out, just to minimize wear and tear on the road. But roads in a subdivision, an industrial subdivision, are built to accommodate heavy traffic. So the expectation is, is the road will receive that sort of traffic at some point in the future. Likely not 25 trucks a day. But that's the essence of why Andy's here and why we have these regulations to make sure that the road's properly constructed, properly compacted, and the courses of the construction are done properly. So, you know, we were sort of holding the cards on to make sure that the road is completed. You know, they may have a timing issue, as Mr. Opochinski pointed out, with somebody who wants to build on their property, but they can't get a building from it because the roadway's not in front of it. So they've got, you know, a couple of timing issues here. But what's in front of the board is approval of these lots under the board's regulations. And if the applicant, the person who receives that permit, isn't able to perform in that timeframe, that's their peril because there's stuff in the way or the other conditions we pointed out. So, you know, we're in a couple rounds of review letters. Andy's going to put together the next one. And, you know, we'll confer with town council to make sure we're on sound footing as far as what the board is looking at this point in relationship to all the other sort of moving parts that are going on with the site and various other committees and boards in town.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. Any further comments, questions? All right, then the chairman will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Deion, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Any further discussion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky says aye.
Caneelie Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sordillo says aye.
All right, and this
Public hearing will be continued to
June 28th, I think is the date we were just talking about.
June 28th, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
Order, how are we able to close a public hearing and then still postpone the meeting? You closed the public session.
Thank you. If you have a comment, please step up to the microphone and identify yourself. But I believe Mr. Bott raised his hand to answer the question. And I might have been mistaken. I meant to continue. So you may have a valid point.
I just don't know how you close the hearing and then continue.
You need to identify.
I did. Alan Jermaine, 24 pine.
So the public hearing, you can close the public hearing and still have a discussion with the applicant and the staff in to meet those conditions. So at a continued meeting, we would be having this discussion with staff and the board and not necessarily the public. That's the essence of closing the public hearing.
But I can assure you, Mr. Jermaine, that I am wildly open to public comments, whether it is in or is not in public hearing. And I can assure you that I will accept every person that wishes to speak on any item.
So to clarify, if you're anticipating entertaining comments from the public at the June 28th meeting, it's probably not appropriate at this point to close the public.
All right. So excellent point. So how do we readdress this through appropriate?
Right. So the person who made the motion to close the public hearing, if they're fine rescinding their motion, the second's fine with that. Then we'll go back to the first thing.
Excellent.
We're going to continue to hear June 28th.
Thank you very much.
I rescind my motion.
Is that okay with the second? Did we have a second on that?
That's okay with Alan? Excellent. Now we vote on that.
Continue public hearing to June 28th.
All right. So you rescind it?
I rescind it.
And your motion will be?
My motion would be to extend it to June 28th?
The chair will accept the motion to continue the public hearing to June 28th at 7:00 PM.
Make said motion, yes.
A motion made by Mr. Deion, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Any further discussion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Caneelie Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to take an eight-minute bathroom break. And we will reconvene at 11 past 9:00. The sign-in sheet at the back of the room, please. Anybody wishing to speak should sign in so it helps our, assists in our keeping of the minutes. Next item on the agenda is the application of Peter Sprague requesting a special permit and site plan review located Offspring Street, Lot Number Two, Ricketts Pond Business Park in Carver. The project will consist of the construction of two commercial buildings located at Lot Number Two. The lot will be comprised of two commercial buildings with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Eric Schumaker, McKenzie Engineering, here representing Peter Sprague, our client for Lot Two of the Ricketts Pond Business Park subdivision. So since we last met, similar to Lot One, we received a peer review letter from Mr. Glynes, and we addressed, addressed those comments in a response letter, as well as revisions to the plan.
Eric, can you pull the mic down?
Apologize. So I'll walk through those revisions quickly. They're similar in line to what I just spoke about in Lot One, so I'll try to make it brief. So starting with the existing conditions plan, we updated the topography as shown in red, like I discussed earlier. Test pits were added on Lot One, which were touched upon in, in some of the butters' comments. I'd just like to add that in the soil testing we did conduct, we excavated down to elevation, elevation of the pond, I believe it's elevation 130. So we, we did excavate down to that pond elevation, and we didn't observe groundwater, so we don't anticipate any issues with any of the groundwater, as, as mentioned. We made some minor revisions to the site layout plan. We added the doorways and the overhead bay doors, wall pack lightings, the ADA lights, similar to Lot One. Just to note, in accordance with your zoning bylaw, I know it was a comment in Mr. Glynes' latest review letter we received earlier this week, none of those wall pack lightings will be over 11 feet in height. Moving on to the grading and drainage plan, we just added some Spock grades intermittently throughout the site plan, as recommended in the peer review letter, to really just show our drainage intent on this lot. The roof drains connect to that intermediate pipe running through the lot, so we have a TY connection there to, you know, capture any of the roof runoff and get that directed to the infiltration basin. Some, some more detail similar to Lot One was added to the landscape plan. We added the red bud trees along the landscape islands in front of the buildings, smooth rose bushes in the buffer area on, on each side of the building, and then we made a buffer of red cedar in the pussy willows along the property line. And similar to the other lot, and we're trying to keep this in line with the development, those pin oak trees were added to the frontage. Now, those were all pollinator species identified on a list given to me by Mr. Bott, so we made sure to add those and, so... An emergency vehicle access plan was added to the site layout plan, very general. This shows a 100-foot fire truck navigating the site. We don't anticipate any issues with emergency vehicle access, and I believe the fire department did not have any concerns with access or exit from the lot. And the only other change to note was, similar to Lot One, we included some more detail on the drainage calculations and stormwater management plan. We redid the calcs relating to the stormwater standards, checked our sediment four bay over at the infiltration basin, that was still compliant, and we added some BMPs and an operation and maintenance plan, similar to Lot One. So that's a quick rundown of the changes. I'll answer any questions the board may have.
What is your side landscaping plan set at as far as footage?
We label some buffers on the sheet. Is, is that what you're referring to, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yeah, is it, are you at seven feet? Is that what it is?
Seven-foot landscape buffer with one-foot cave cod berm adjacent to the property lines and eight-foot, 8.3 feet adjacent to the buildings. In the area where we have the red bud trees, it's 12 feet wide. And we provided some technical justification for the waiver. I believe that's perimeter site, or perimeter landscaping, and that, that's on the legend plan.
And it should be at what? It should be at 20 feet or 16? 20?
20 for this project, based on the, the parking, it's increased.
And what was your justification on cutting it in more than half? Reducing it by more than 50%?
Let me grab the plan. Landscape buffer of approximately seven feet is provided along the sides, or 12 feet is provided along the sides of each parking area for the proposed principal buildings. A landscape buffer of approximately seven feet is provided adjacent to the property line, and a 40-foot landscape buffer is provided to the rear of the lot. The site is located within the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. Spring Street right-of-way is located in the Route 44 zoning district adjacent to the subdivision. The site will not be visible by any residential uses. The 40-foot wide loading area behind each principal building is the minimum and has been sized due to the required turning radius for a box truck accessing the loading dock and leaving the site. 24-foot wide driving aisles associated with the site are based on the minimum required width for two-way traffic. Based on that technical justification, we believe our parking lot perimeter landscaping has been provided and should be sufficient.
And you're not proposing public access to these buildings?
I do not believe we are, no sir.
Are these buildings going to have a second floor or loft on them?
No second floor in these buildings.
Did you berm the trash receptacles?
There is a one-foot wide cave cod berm that is around the whole perimeter of the property, so that will be around the trash as well. I believe we also will be adding a vinyl fence enclosure.
Well, specific to main, to, to, anything, if, if this is industrial, you should be containing the trash area specifically, too. Berman control plan? We have some discussion to do about phased construction with Mr. Glynes. Um, we get a retaining wall in the rear that's at four feet and, are we awaiting fire protection?
Uh, well, I'll hold that. The buildings are less than 7,500 square feet, so we won't be providing fire protection for these.
Okay. Now, because I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Glynes, and I want to make sure that all fire department comments were addressed in, in regards to this.
So I, I did, Sandy Glynes, I did speak with the deputy fire chief about Lot One and Lot Two for Ricketts Pond Business Park, and he verbally confirmed with me that his concerns have been addressed on site circulation and fire protection. And I do mention, under section 2330, which is number, comment number two with the zoning bylaws, that the applicable sections that I need to confer with the fire department on, I did, and did address those concerns, which, you know, directly related to building layout, emergency access, as well as pedestrian routes around the proposed buildings.
Now, have we done a articulated truck turnout? Have we done a turn study for larger trucks?
Uh, well, there is a circulation plan for this. I, I can touch on that. The Form A law, which was, I believe it's, has frontage on Spring Street that was originally approved, we took that same loading area that was provided behind the rear of that building, and we mimicked it on this design. So their lot was, we did a turning analysis using a box truck, and we mimicked that here, and that was approved by the board. So that, that same 40 feet is what we're using for this design.
And they're, they did provide a circulation plan for emergency vehicles, and the designed vehicle for that is a 47-foot long vehicle, which is consistent with Carver's emergency apparatus. So that's able to loop around the site and exit appropriately based on the turning radius and proposed widths of the, the site layout currently.
And they'll be able to act. Please, Mr. Bott.
Yes, I, I think it's one of your light-breaking bulletins you got on your desk this morning or this evening, number 10 from the fire department. Roadways around the perimeter shall be sufficient to provide access, drawing number EVA confirms this. So the fire department's looked at that and confirmed that they're happy with the access around the site. It's one of your two number 10s, the one that looks a lot like. Item number one.
And no plans to be storing of toxic or hazardous waste? No, no hazardous waste on site?
Okay. Um... Because that'll be part of the condition, because otherwise, there's certain other aspects that we would have to deal with as far as berming and containment and disposal in that regard. Um... All right, are we waiting on any comments in regards to this, or?
Currently, there's no outstanding comments pertaining directly to the site plan review and special permit for Lot Two. The applicant did state the mounting height for the wall pack lighting would be 11 feet or less, so that's on the record. I did request that the survey, existing condition survey show the drainage structures within Ricketts Pond Drive, the right-of-way, but that's really more of a concern for them just tying in the stormwater management into the street and making sure that all that's consisted. But that's really going to be checked by the town and Fussin O'Neal when the road is constructed. Other than that, the applicant has addressed Fussin O'Neal's concerns, the remaining portion of the memo is recommended conditions, as well as input regarding the waiver requests.
And approving phasing construction? I know that was a concern.
I guess I'll, I'll let the applicant speak first to their intent on the phased construction, and then I can weigh in on that.
So the phase construction has to do with how the, the client wants to construct buildings one and two. I believe the intent is to build, building one first and get the finances to build the second building afterwards. So we provided the phasing plan to basically just have building one be its own standalone building with, you know, parking area and utilities while, while they're securing the funds to construct building two. At that time, building two will be constructed and the, you know, the pavement will be increased around the back portion of the lot. We believe that we designed this in a way that either, either site, well, we won't call it a site plan, but either building with its proposed parking area would be sufficient and could stand alone as its own.
All right.
So I've reviewed the applicant's phasing plan, and I don't have any technical concerns with how they laid it out in relation to the site improvements, the grading, or the utility layout. But I, I think that the board should most, I'm recommending the boarding, board include a condition that either the town operation and maintenance department or Fussin O'Neal conduct at least one site inspection prior to granting a certificate of occupancy for building one. That will ensure that the proposed site layout for this phasing plan has been constructed according to plan and give the town and Fussin O'Neal a chance to address any potential revisions that need to be made to make sure that that portion of the site is functional and operational, not knowing at this point what the timeframe is on when the second building will be constructed.
What's the acreage on the site?
It's 1.9 acres.
And you're getting, and you're asking for reduced side setbacks? I think, I think you can fit a bicycle rack on this property, too. I think it would be hard to say that there's no room for a bike rack on, on the property.
We're comfortable to have that as a condition, to fit one bicycle rack.
Questions from the board?
Uh, one real quick. So just looking at the, at the berm at the back, it looks like the parking lot is right up against the current proposed berm that is going to be, you know, supposed to be seated, and wondering if the change in, if the recommended change in angle, the, the grade by Mr. Glynes is going to, that, that's going to affect where that, where that hillside comes down. How is that going to affect the, your parking lot plan there?
We're worried about Lot Number Two with this submission, so any grading on, on Lot Number One will have, will have to tie into our contours.
Right, but the, I mean, if it's too steep, i- if it's the same grade as what Lot Number One is, I'm pretty sure Mr. Glynes is going to have the same concerns.
It will not be the same grade. They, they have a cistern, so they have to grade down at a two-to-one slope to achieve the elevation of the parking lot. I believe on this lot, we don't exceed even a three-to-one slope in, in any areas of the site, even in the rear, as you mentioned.
Okay. All right.
So if I may, I can, I can comment on that as well. The existing and proposed topography on, it's, it's planned north, but it's really the west side of the site, is steeper on Lot One than it is on Lot Two.
Okay.
So for Lot One, I would like to see the location of the cistern and the grading around that revised, which I think can reasonably be done without impacting the edge of pavement or the proposed finished grade that they're currently proposing on Lot Two. If you look at the plan, it's really that top-left corner there, which is not as steep that I think can be, I think we can reasonably increase the proposed slope of that to improve the proposed grading on Lot One. And I don't want to speak for the applicant, but, you know, I think since it's all under the same ultimate developer for the road, I'm, I'm sure that the two future property owners could come to some sort of agreement to have a grading easement to accommodate that, but I leave that up to the applicant and the ownership.
I also see under number eight in your recommendations, applicant has requested waiver for providing a 20-foot landscaping buffer. FNO would like to discuss with the planning board before making a recommendation on this.
Yeah, so referring to section 3242?
Yes.
So the bylaws require a 20-foot landscape buffer for this based on the zone and then the proposed parking. Right now, the applicant's proposing a seven-foot buffer on the north and south side, and then a 16-foot buffer along the right-of-way, if you include the portion of the landscape island that's within the right-of-way. I believe that it's a valid waiver request as the, this proposed lot is going to abut to adjacent commercial lots. lots, knowing what the other approved or proposed layout of those adjacent lots are. We'll end up with approximately 15-foot buffer between lots one and two with plant material on both lots to kind of supplement that buffer, and really, it's just screening one commercial use from another. I definitely don't want to, I think it's more important that there's some plant material there than necessarily the width, so that's why I'm recommending approval of the waiver as the applicant has laid out the site. I think it's also important to note, as the applicant went through, there isn't any excessive proposed pavement widths or drive aisle widths. You know, obviously, for any development project, you can make an argument that the building could be smaller, but at this point, I think, you know, the approximately 7,500-square-foot building size is pretty consistent with what we've seen in town for these uses, and I think it's a reasonable overall site layout, in my opinion.
Any questions from the board? This is a public hearing. Do we have any, anybody interested or willing to speak? Please step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Meg Sheehan, Community Land and Water Coalition. I'd like to incorporate my prior comments on Lot one into comments on this and ask maybe an obvious question, but it doesn't seem like anyone is talking about it. Section 3130 requires plans to show water provision, like drinking water, I assume that means, and water for use in the buildings. What is the cumulative water usage for all of the buildings, and where will that come from?
I, I think.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
Proposed wells are located in the rear of the lot. They will be designed by a mechanical and plumbing engineer before occupancy and building permits.
What's the particular draw potential, or what are you looking at drawing?
With the warehouse use, very little. We have not calculated it, but it'll be, you know, much less than any sort of residential well. We're talking about a warehouse.
Ballpark figure?
I can't give an accurate ballpark figure.
Mr. Glines, rough estimate? Under a thousand for sure?
I, I don't want to speculate.
Okay, that's fine. I think you.
I can certainly do a formal review of that, but as applicant stated, it's definitely something that's going to be reviewed more thoroughly during the building permit process. Typically, at this stage, we're focused on the location of the proposed well and then the required specs and constraints on that.
And I believe over 1,000 gallons a day will require permitting through the state, so that would go through the.
100,000 gallons a day, right, under the Water Management Act.
Sorry?
It's 100,000 gallons a day, requires a water manage, 100,000 gallons a day, requires a Water Management Act from the permit from the state. And I was just wondering about the cumulative water usage of the subdivision and which will impact the surrounding water uses.
For sure, that's something we have to take into consideration, considering the amount of buildings and the particular usage, so.
Okay.
I think that's something that we should calculate and find out at what point, as a subdivision, it overtaxes that particular area.
Yeah, Fussin' O'Neill hasn't done a formal review of the well demand for this location. We've done a formal review of the stormwater management for the definitive plan as well as each individual lot, so that's kind of an ongoing review process for us to make sure that the stormwater management approach that's proposed by each individual lot is consistent with what was approved and reviewed for the definitive plan. The stormwater conveyance in general for the entire subdivision is directed to two infiltration basins along the public frontage that are already installed currently and are receiving some stormwater. Those basins have been sized to store and infiltrate runoff from 100-year storm event from all the proposed impervious surfaces for the entire definitive plan buildout. So basically, what we're requiring the applicant to do is update that stormwater analysis and report when each individual lot is designed and submitted to the town for site plan review and special permit. And so far, for lots one and two that we've reviewed, the stormwater approach is consistent with what we've previously reviewed and approved for the definitive plan. So the last really, you know, missing piece in that, I want to get some additional test pits in those infiltration basins to confirm that seasonal high groundwater at those locations still has the required vertical separation in accordance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. Right now, we don't have any evidence from previous submissions and data that we've received so far that that is going to be an issue, but it is something that we want to continue to monitor as the site is developed. And as the applicant mentioned, they may do some excavation on site, but we really need a professional soil evaluation to identify any redox features or evidence of seasonal high groundwater, even though, you know, the standing groundwater elevation may not be at that elevation when that test pit is conducted. So that's been a condition that we recommended for Lot one, as well as it's reiterated in Lot two here as well, even though Lot two isn't adjacent to those infiltration basins. Stormwater from Lot two is going to be discharged to that infiltration basin, so it's part of the same cohesive stormwater management system.
And we just recently got in the up-to-date topographical information, so test pits haven't been conducted on that site?
Not for Lot two. Some test pits were conducted recently on Lot one. The main goal of those test pits was for Board of Health review to approve this proposed septic system, but we're able to use that information, and having the Board of Health agent review those kind of solidifies the results of that. But those, as far as I know, still need to be conducted for Lot two, correct?
Yeah, that will be conducted when we design the septic system, and that'll be prior to issuance of the building permit.
So I think that, you know, there's definitely some more data that we're going to want from the individual applicants and owners on the individual lots, as well as the main developer for the subdivision road, and we're keeping track of all that information in the one cohesive stormwater management report that the applicant's been updating throughout the development process.
One more follow-up question that relates to all of that is the same topic I started talking about at the beginning, is the total earth removal and change in topography here is nowhere near complete, so it's like, I think about less than half of the earth removal is done. So taking into account the Plimpton section and the Marab section, it appears from the permits, and maybe Mr. Opachinsky could clarify, that there will be a total of 1 million cubic yards taken out in this area. So calculating groundwater levels now and stormwater runoff now, when the final topography is far from determined, would seem like it makes those calculations more complex.
If I may, so we, the initial stormwater assessment and analysis that we reviewed for the definitive subdivision was based on the total buildout of the definitive subdivision with anticipated impervious cover for not just the road, but each individual lot within that subdivision. So obviously, at that time, the applicant wasn't sure exactly what the site layout, impervious cover was going to be, but they estimated how much impervious cover was going to be included in the entire subdivision and designed the conveyance system and the infiltration basins to receive that rate and volume of stormwater runoff. And as the subdivision has continued to be developed, we're requiring the applicants for each individual lot to update the stormwater analysis model and report that was done for the definitive subdivision road that includes those two infiltration basins to confirm that the proposed impervious cover is either equal to or less than what was originally approved by the definitive plan. And to date, at least on Lot one and two, they've actually shown a slight decrease in the impervious cover that they were originally approved for on the definitive plan. And I guess it's important to note that the part of that analysis is comparing the flow paths as well as point of analysis of where that water's going from pre-development and post-development. So we're using the pre-development condition prior to any clearing or earthwork, which I think would have been a 2017 condition as our existing conditions. So the stormwater analysis and management system that the applicant's designed basically is mitigating increases in peak flows and actually increasing the groundwater recharge at those infiltration basin locations. So ultimately, they're infiltrating all runoff from all impervious surfaces up to the 100-year storm event in those two infiltration basins. And at a minimum, they need to have two feet of vertical separation between the bottom of the infiltration basin and the seasonal high groundwater table for water quality treatment. That two-feet depth is set by DEP, it's in the stormwater handbook, and it's also consistent with the amount of sand that a traditional septic system would require to treat wastewater in a septic system. So obviously, there's different pros and cons to different stormwater management systems and approaches, but at the moment, the applicant's following all local and state regulations for stormwater management.
If I may, Mr. Chair, so I'd urge you to look at our experts' report, which comments on the original definitive subdivision plan, stormwater calculations, and if Fussin' O'Neill could respond to that, that would be great, because Mr. Horsley does say that those were erroneous measurements, calculations. I'm not going to pretend to understand the flow rates and all of that, but if you could, they could respond to that, that would be very helpful. As well, those original plans, and I'm not sure, the subdivision plans are taking into account the earth removal on the adjacent Marab property and how those changes in topography and runoff impact what's happening on the SLT Ricketts Pond lot.
And, yeah, it hasn't, because they're not part of the subdivision, but I can see where it would be an extenuating factor to what was approved.
Right, but in the sense that it's all one project and one subdivision plan, and he owns the abutting properties, it's, can't really be segmented like that and still come up with accurate stormwater, groundwater measurements, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add that our original subdivision design, drainage report was peer reviewed, and the peer review had no issues, so we do not believe the report was erroneous, and we do not believe that claim is accurate.
Well, if you could take a look at it and respond, that would be great.
Thank you. I, I did read it earlier. Thank you, and I will reread it. Mr. Glines, we're still waiting for a little information in regards to this?
I think that Lot two is in fairly good shape. I think there's some more outstanding concerns on Lot one, but I think it's possible that the board, you know, could review conditions and waivers and potentially vote on Lot two tonight, but I leave that up to recommendation from the town planner and how comfortable the board is with their own time to review the submission documents.
Right. We got a lot of them in recently. Mr. Vought?
Whatever the pleasure the board is, you know, we can certainly incorporate Andy's comments and waivers into any decision, but pleasure the board.
I guess just last thing I want to mention is, you know, obviously, there's still a handful of general comments out there and concerns from the public regarding this subdivision. The town can still look into those concerns and do further review as part of the definitive plan, but not the approval there, but, you know, really the construction of that road and, you know, making sure that that is constructed as previously approved. And as I mentioned before, you know, the town's protected under the bond that the developers established for the subdivision road, ensuring that the full road extents and all the proposed utility mains and stormwater management system, a core part of that road will be constructed.
Because I haven't really had the time to come up with a list of conditions in regards to this property, but I know you're working on a deadline. Does the board feel comfortable moving on with this, or would they need a little more time for review?
Are we doing a sidewalk in this or not?
This was a problematic sidewalk, along with the first one, right?
Yeah.
They didn't even, couldn't even tell where the other building was. Mr. Deion feels, I won't put words into your mouth. If you've got something to say, say it.
Just, you know.
I know you have concerns with Lot one and the sidewalk that was.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I'd like to see how things are going to be set up in there other than just looking at a map. Then you look at the map and you see how it's done, it's different, you know. I'd like to do a sidewalk, but if no one wants to do it, that's fine with me.
I would, I would, I would not, the first sidewalk was very.
I couldn't tell anything in the first sidewalk.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you know.
There was, there was some confusion. I think, I would think, all right, I think it's best if we continue the public hearing for two weeks, and I think we should do another sidewalk, and I think we should tie them all together as a comprehensive one.
And do, look at one or two at the same time and be done with them.
And three, do them all at once.
Do them all, one day, right there. If that's not a problem with moving the sand to the dirt, just so we can see what's going to go where.
The board will accept the motion to continue the public hearing to 28th?
28th.
At 7:00 p.m. So moved. Mr. Gatski made the motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Deion. Any discussion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gatski says aye. Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodilo says aye.
I just think it's unfair for our client to pay for another sidewalk, especially when, I mean, these buildings are, it's.
I mean, these buildings are, it's two rectangular shaped buildings that are less than 7,500 square feet, which is in line with what was approved on the Form A lot, and just dealing with the timeline and of their financial deadline. I mean, we would be open to the sidewalk if it's absolutely necessary, but I would just like to raise those concerns.
I have concerns, having been on the first sidewalk, that it wasn't clear, it was a mess. There were piles everywhere, you couldn't see where the buildings were staked out, and you couldn't understand where the lot separations or the main road was. It was very confusing, it was very vague, and that, that's just my personal opinion. I know Mr. Dion had concerns in regards to the sidewalk, but if it had done, been done appropriately the first time, then I would tend to agree with you that it wouldn't be necessary. But there's just too much confusion, and I think with a project of this size and a development of this nature in an industrial area, that it's better to be play, play it safe than it is to, to take chances and roll the dice. But the board is, fully understands your concerns, and this is not something that will, that I think that we can finish up in the two weeks, but we need to set up a time to do a sidewalk on those two sites, and I would think you would include the proposed site number three to do it all at once, and have the sites cleared of equipment and clearly marked out, even, even we walked through the woods, and, and sites are marked out better than they were at that time. So that's, that's my concerns. Thank you. All right.
If you would. Also, I, I have a difficult time with considering the stuff to, to move forward without the preliminary stuff being completed, and the roads not, the road and the, and services are not, are not completed, and they're not set up fully, so...
Agreed, and that should be part of the conditions.
Yeah.
And again, we haven't, haven't had a proper opportunity to address some of the conditions here and come up with a full list. Thank you for your time. We need to, we might as well do it now, we get Eric here, establish a sidewalk because, and we're going to include all three buildings in it if that, that's okay with you?
Yeah, that's okay with me. I'll be presenting Lot 3 as well and...
Okay, so we just tie it all together? All right.
Well, because, yeah, I was concerned.
So we have, our next order of business is the application of A.D. Makepeace Company, Billson Thomas, requesting a definitive subdivision approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision control law for property off Wareham Street in Carver, Mass. in a residential agricultural district. The applicant wishes to construct the 370-foot linear foot roadway and cul-de-sac to support a two-conventional, two-lot conventional subdivision. I believe we did a sidewalk on this one.
Is this the one that's Hammond and...
Pardon?
Yes, the board did conduct a sidewalk on this site. This is 300 Wareham, off Wareham Road.
Well, yeah, that one there.
The planner showed up with a kayak on the roof.
So Mr. Chairman, Matt Cody, Billson Thomas, like I said, we submitted the subdivision plan back in April. We conducted the sidewalk on June 2nd. At that time, there was concerns about, you know, showing like potential house locations and septic system locations, and we provided exhibit to that effect on June 13th. And I guess, and it's our understanding that Fussin O'Neill has not provided comments on this yet, so it looks like we're probably going to continue.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't hear a lot.
Fussin O'Neill, we haven't received any comments yet on this one, so we're, you know, assuming that, you know, that process will continue.
Yeah, applicant's correct. We started our review a little late on this one based on when it was submitted, so we haven't formally issued any comments for this yet, but we'll be making it a priority given the submission date and, you know, review timeframe for the definitive plan.
Are you feeling that 28th of this month would be, or are you gonna, well, you're going to make your comments and I have to respond?
I would say that, that doesn't give us a lot of time.
Right, right, so as per moment, what, what do you feel?
Yeah, yeah, I think if they're throwing around July 12th, assuming we get those comments, failure should be fine.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I think myself and my team will be able to get those comments out next week. So I have a project engineer assisting me with it, I just, I haven't gotten a draft set from them yet.
Excellent. Well, this is a public hearing, is there anybody that would like to address this topic? Seeing none, I will accept a motion, oh, hold on one moment.
I only have one quick comment, and that's that it doesn't appear the plans are on the website, so it's hard to know where the sales, if you could post them, that would be great. Thank you.
The plans are on the website.
Okay, so what's it described, maybe it's different from what's on the agenda?
Yeah, I think there was a bit of an issue with the naming.
There's, there's two projects on Wareham Street there.
Right, we have the Gibbs, zero Wareham Street.
Across the street from each other more or less.
Yeah, across the street from each other, essentially.
But on our website it is.
Yeah, this is the one that is near Hammond Street.
It's called Harwich Road on the way.
Harwich Road, okay, great, thank you.
No, thank you. So the board will accept a motion to continue the public hearing to July 12th at 7:00 p.m.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Any discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says yes.
John Gasky says aye.
Colonel Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right. This one's, next order of business is a public hearing on, we will be opening the public hearing on the application of Bridgestone Development Incorporated, requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant, pursuant to sections 3100, 5300, 2330, and 2230 of the Carver zoning bylaw, located at Lot Number 3, Ricketts Pond Business Park, Offspring Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 32, Lot 1-3, in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District, SSID. The project consists of the construction of two commercial buildings located at Lot 3, Ricketts Pond Business Park, located Offspring Street. The lot will be comprised of two commercial buildings with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. Stormwater from the site development will be directed to infiltration basins designed to accommodate runoff from Ricketts Pond Business Park definitive subdivision. Any person interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and a place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the planning department and may be reviewed during normal business hours.
Eric Schumaker, McKenzie Engineering Group, we designed the civil site layout plans and surveyed the property. I'm here representing Bridgestone Development Incorporated. So we're here to discuss now Lot 3, it's across the street from the two, two lots we just discussed. So this is Lot 3 of the Ricketts Pond definitive subdivision in Carver, assessors map 32, Lot 1-3. It's comprised of 3.91 acres, located in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. It's bordered by Ricketts Pond to the east, Route 44 to the northwest, undeveloped woodlands to the north, and Spring Street to the south. We're in the public hearing process with the Carver Conservation Commission at the moment. We submitted a notice of intent, and our first meeting was on June 1st. We expect to close the public hearing at the next meeting, they, they had no comments for us. The parcel is currently comprised of an earth removal and mining operation, as I'm sure you all know. The lot consists of some stands and gravel stockpiles of varying elevation and size, and similar to all the developments at the subdivision, the lot will be mined down to one foot below the proposed grade shown on the site plans. The topography ranges, but generally, we slope towards Ricketts Pond to the east. Site's located in a FEMA Zone X, not located in a DEP Zone 2, and we are located within the Carver Water Resource Protection Districts, as are all lots in this area of town. Bordering vegetated wetlands located along the eastern portion of the lot were delineated by Environmental Consulting and Restoration on February 6th of 2018, and then ORAD approved the limits of bordering vegetated wetlands, that was issued July 9th of 2018. A notice of intent was originally submitted for the basin and roadway included in that definitive subdivision submission, and we received an order of conditions for that, as you're all aware. So moving on to the site layout plan, this is just in line with the other site plans you saw earlier today, this just generally shows the proposed building as well as the surface treatments, the land usage table and parking calks up to the top of the plan show the required criteria in your zoning bylaw versus what we're proposing. So similar to other, other lots in this development, we're proposing two, two commercial buildings on this one. They're going to be 7,452 square foot, square foot footprints with batuminous concrete parking areas. We'll have 24-foot driving aisles to navigate around the site, and I believe it's a 38-foot wide loading area to the rear of the lot. Portion of that proposed, the con, the tunus concrete parking area is going to be located in the 100-foot buffer to bordering vegetated wetlands, and that's why we're in that public hearing process for the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. The concrete parking area will consist of 24 onsite parking spaces with two handicap accessible spots, and as, as you guys questioned earlier, that one foot of Cape Cod berm is going to wrap around the perimeter of the entire property, or the entire parking area, including those spaces designated for the dumpster pad. As I mentioned, loading bays will be in the rear, similar to the pattern we've been working on with the subdivision. A five-foot wide cement concrete sidewalk is located on the front of each proposed building, and we provided landscape buffers around the perimeter of the lot. That infiltration basin, I believe it's number two, is located directly to the south. We, we're trying to keep this very consistent with the other lots in the subdivision, so I, ultimately, when we get into designing a detailed landscaping plan, we want to copy those landscape buffers and those planting species, pollinator species we were talking about for lots 1 and 2. Moving on to the grading and drainage plan, it's worth noting for this lot specifically, the limits of pavement did not change at all from the original subdivision design. This made our life very easy when really looking at the stormwater that this lot is going to generate because it was already approved during the subdivision, so. Our goal was to design a drainage system that complied with the local and state regulations as well as attenuate the 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events. Closed drainage system consisting of a series of catch basins and drain manholes directs the stormwater runoff from Lot 3 to the infiltration basin I mentioned to the south. So that, that infiltration basin in general accepts runoff from the entire eastern portion of the subdivision. That basin has been overdesigned, and there's actually, we'll call it a balancing pipe that connects the basin across the street to this one, so when that hits a certain elevation, it's going to flood to this. Since this basin was pretty greatly overdesigned, the recharge, which is calculated to that lowest invert, there's ample recharge and provided with this basin. So just to touch on that, the, the flood elevation hits 138, and the top of berm is elevation 140, so we have excess freeboard, we have two feet of freeboard, which is in compliance with the requirements for infiltration basins. Moving on to the utility plan, sheet C3, utility design is pretty simple and in line with what you have seen in the other lots. A proposed septic system will handle the wastewater demands of both of the buildings. A proposed well will be located to the rear of the property and will handle the water demands of both buildings. Similar to lots 1 and 2, we'll have propane tanks for gas and electric telephone cable conduits will extend from Ricketts Pond Drive for both buildings. So that's, that's just a quick rundown of what we're proposing here for Lot 3. I can answer any initial questions that any board members have.
Have you received any approvals through CONCOM yet? Because I noticed some of this is in the 65-foot wetland zone.
We're not proposing any, any impervious in the 65-foot wetlands, and in our conversations with the Conservation Commission, they, they don't have any issues with the current design.
So the, the basin has already been approved or not approved, or it's...
The basin was approved under the notice of intent originally filed for the subdivision, so that, that original notice of intent and order of conditions included the basin as well as the roadway for Ricketts Pond Drive.
Did it include putting the dumpsters inside of the wetland area?
I, I believe it did. That, that was an issue brought up at Conservation Commission, and it's impervious surface outside of the 65-foot buffer, so they didn't have an issue.
Now, this is the side of the street with the sidewalk, but, sidewalk, but...
Correct.
I see your landscaping plan includes...
These, these plans were submitted prior to receiving that comment.
The sidewalk comment?
The, this, the comment from Mr. Glines to have the sidewalk was made in the submission for lots 1 and 2. At that time, this plan was already submitted to the town, so we didn't address that on this revision.
I would expect that somehow you're going to find room to fit in the 16-foot landscape islands in there, too?
We, we have the same technical justification we've been using on the other sites for our landscape buffers.
Your sites have, are proposed in 16-foot landscape buffers in front of the buildings, which is, you're asking for a variance down from the 20-foot required.
16-foot in front of the buildings, I, I believe it's, it's 12-foot landscape islands on each side, which is in line with the cement.
Well, I'm talking about on Ricketts Pond Drive because currently, you're including your, your, your front, and you're asking, you're asking for parking spaces in front of the building, and the sidewalk is on that side of the street, and there's, there's no landscape buffer, so to speak, for this. The other side has 16-foot landscape buffers, even though they protrude out into the street. I personally don't have an issue with that as long as they're there, and, but I, I can't even, I'm not, can't even guess what this is, a three, four-foot buffer? And I, and I think you're going to want to beef up a few of the evergreens, too, and on some of these buildings, too, to, because I know the other Lot A was previously approved, but... But is this going to be on the same height? Is it going to be higher, lower than the original front building?
Which building are you referring to?
I'm looking at the entirety of Lot Three.
The heights of the building will be consistent with...
The Form A lot out front?
Yeah, it's the same developer.
This was proposed as an upscale development. And you're really cutting back on a lot of the things that make it upscale development that allow infiltration into the ground, shade trees, windbreaks, things along those lines. And that's certainly going to have to be updated with a sidewalk. And because it... It seems like you're trying to fit an awful lot into a very little space in this. And that's my, part of my concern.
So like I mentioned, we will have an updated landscaping plan and we'll call out species and go through that exercise. We did follow the same technical justification for request of the waiver for the landscape buffer as was approved on the Form A lot and we discussed for Lot Two earlier. But like you said, the sidewalk will be located on that side of the street.
And then... It seems like you're trying to squeeze an awful lot in here. But you're asking for comments and that's where we're going on, that's where I'm going on this. But this is the first I've really had a chance to look at it.
And just to add again, the buildings and the parking layout have not changed at all for this from the original definitive subdivision that was approved.
Right, but now, but there's variances to take into consideration. And whether those variances are good for the town or the development or the people or the landscaping is something that we'll have to decide. Does anybody, it is a public hearing. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Board members?
Should we schedule a sidewalk for that one, too?
We're going to schedule all three of them at the same time. And I would like...
Yeah, I have no comments until we do a sidewalk.
Okay. Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Andy Glyons with Fussin O'Neil. We haven't provided any formal comments for this submission yet. But I can provide some initial feedback and kind of reiterate a couple of the planning board's concerns. Obviously, the sidewalk will reduce the width of that landscape strip along the frontage. I would be, I guess I'd... If the board requests the applicant to expand the width of that landscape strip, potentially approach they could take would be pushing the proposed site improvements impervious further away from the lot. But then, obviously, they're restricted by that sixty-five-foot buffer there. So I guess I recommend that the applicant confirm that they want to get formal approval from CONSCOM before getting initial feedback and comments from the planning board because the planning board's comments and concerns may impact, you know, the layout and CONSCOM approval. So it might be worthwhile continuing the CONSCOM hearing until you get some initial comments because they might be related. I definitely agree that more plant material should be required. I think that some of the plant material that's currently proposed could actually be reallocated and relocated. Specifically, some of the plant material that's proposed adjacent to the proposed buildings, especially where the two proposed buildings abut each other. I don't think that's providing much value. And based on the orientation of the buildings and the shading, the plant material may not do too well on the northern side on some of those buildings. So having the applicant reallocate some of that plant material to the perimeter landscaping, including the frontage and definitely on the side facing. The infiltration basin, which is the most exposed on this lot, would be beneficial to the overall landscaping intent. And then although the impervious cover and kind of layout is consistent with the definitive plan, just wanted to reiterate that we still have to do the site plan review and kind of make sure that those are consistent and kind of in line with previous statement about definitive plan being conservative on the amount of impervious cover that was proposed at that stage to make sure that the stormwater management system would be appropriately sized, ideally oversized for what the future development on each individual lot would be. But now that we're in the process of reviewing individual lots in the site plan review and special permit process, want to make sure that adequate screening is, requirements are met to the maximum extent practicable.
Sure, and I believe the side setback or property line screening is at twenty-four feet on this property?
I'd have to check. I think it's like the other lots is going to be impacted by the number of proposed parking spaces.
Right.
So I don't have that exact requirement at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Just real quick, if you will. What type of buildings are these supposed to be?
Commercial. I believe in line with the building approved on the Form A lot, I believe a small portion will be office and the rest will be warehouse.
Okay, so there's going to be, so there's going to be trucking in the back of it?
Nothing larger than a box truck will access the loading base.
Okay, has there been any type of noise considerations taken into account? I mean, you've got residents right on the other side over there.
We believe the landscape buffer, the trees will block any sort of noise. I think if it wasn't an issue for the Form A lot, it shouldn't be for this one.
I didn't know, I wasn't involved in Form A lot. So, I mean, I personally hear a lot of vehicle noise behind my house. And I don't have a warehouse behind my house. So to say that that's going to knock down the noise, I disagree. But I think, considering that there's going to be a lot of, appears to be a lot of truck traffic coming into this on a regular basis, that's something that needs to be done, is some type of noise study.
Well, we will, for sure. If there's residents on the other side of an open body of water, then we will require more extensive screening, visual and audio. One-story or any lots or second stories?
Be one-story. Pulled up the building elevations. It should look similar to what's shown.
And again, bicycle racks are going to have to be part of it. There's no reason that you can have that much space and can't fit in a bicycle rack. There's just no reason for it. All right, any more questions and comments from the board? Anybody from the public willing to speak? Please come right up.
Peter Opachinsky, developer. I'm not sure, I may be wrong in this, but I thought when we had the subdivision approved, we received waivers for sidewalks, no sidewalks, period, within the subdivision. And I'm not sure if Mr. Bott could check on that. But I looked at the waivers recently and I recall that there are no sidewalks. So that would help with the landscape issue.
Yeah, I believe that waiver was requested and I will certainly double-check. But I think there's a condition that sidewalks required on one side.
One side is what I thought.
And that's where the comment for the Lot One and Two review came in.
It could be, but maybe I just read it wrong the other day. But I thought they were, they were waived completely. But just something worth checking out, help out with that buffer issue.
All right, we should establish a sidewalk for this. Mr. Bott, recommendations? Or Eric, when do you think would be a good time, appropriate, to do a sidewalk?
We could get stakes in by the end of this week, so...
Friday noon?
Friday at noon.
I'm asking more than telling you.
But I would prefer a time next week, just because I don't know the survey schedule.
Okay.
Could we do it evening? Is that possible?
We could do it in the evening if that's what you'd like, sure. Is that easier for the board?
I work three nights.
The evening works better for me, but...
I can always look at it at another time.
Will you tell me what nights?
Better for the majority.
You're working.
I can find it after, you know, another time.
John, nights good for you?
It's always good for me.
Is there a night that's more conducive to your schedule?
Um, Monday night is okay. No, I'm wrong again. That's when I'm working. So I'll, don't worry about me. I'll visit it.
I was going to say next Tuesday, don't we have our...
But next Tuesday, we have a meeting.
Our combined meeting with the select board.
What time is that? Seven?
I think it's seven.
Uh...
Part of it, so.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah, actually, I think it's more like six-thirty.
Six-thirty? Would a five-thirty Tuesday night be acceptable to the board?
I'll try to make it five-thirty.
Should be all right.
Five-thirty Tuesday?
Yep.
And we'll do our best to get them in this week, too. So if you want to drive by and, obviously with Peter's permission...
Right, right. Now, if somebody wants, if you have them in, you can let Tom know and we'll go through Tom to make arrangements with you.
Yep. So we're looking at June twenty-one. At five-thirty.
Alan Germain, twenty-four pint. As a member of the Conservation Commission, I think that this board should be made aware of the fact that... Can you pull up the overall lot? Please, thank you. This came before Conservation two weeks ago as a simple approval. And my personal belief is, is that would have been achieved by the Conservation Commission until we happened to notice that the well was in the sixty-five and that some of the grading for the slope was also in the sixty-five. So we had done a site visit there, but you see where the well is. And the well is in the sixty-five. Now, Conservation has never denied a variance for a well, but there was no application for a variance. It was a simple approval because nothing was in the sixty-five when the request was made.
I'm just going to ask Eric if you could point to the well.
See the well with the circle right there?
That's okay, that's what I thought, all right.
So that's, the same problem you had finding it is the same problem that we had to see it. And then when we spotted it, Brooke asked that Eric simply modify the application. We now have a DEP number. And so tomorrow night, Conservation will take up the variance request for the well and for the grading off the backside of the berm. Everything else that's on that site right now is, Conservation had no problem with.
Now, I noticed there was a, maybe a silt catch in that area, too?
The proposed compost filter tube, this dotted black line, just put down slope to stop any erosion from hitting Ricketts Pond.
Yep.
It's not impervious.
No, I thought there was a...
No, there's a silt fence and a silt sock that runs on top of it. But just so that the boards are aware, tomorrow night is simply for variance for the well.
I'll have a whole week to look through this and send my information to Mr. Bott, so please.
I just wanted to make a point about the scenic views and the noise and under three-one-six-oh performance standards to point out that this particular lot is on Ricketts Pond. And Ricketts Pond is what's considered a great pond of the Commonwealth, is greater than ten acres. So that means it's held in trust for the public by the state. And the scenic views and those kinds of things are important to the public. And so I would urge the board to do everything that you can to have the scenic views preserved and the noise buffer and so forth for the health of the pond and for the public enjoyment. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I've already mentioned to you. Excellent. Well, we have the sidewalk next Tuesday at five-thirty. And if there's no other comments or questions from the board, I would hear a motion to continue this meeting to...
Well, I think at this point, we'll probably be looking at July twelfth.
July twelfth, yes.
And you've still got to turn comments around to Eric to get back to Andy and get back to Eric.
So I would accept a motion to continue the public hearing to July twelfth at seven PM.
I'll make the said motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dionne, second by Ms. Sordillo. Any discussion? Seen none?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Ken Elyshay says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Helen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, everyone. Thanks.
Next order of business. Member notes. I managed to lose, I didn't somehow. Planning board member notes. Chairman, still accepting applications for the zoning bylaw subcommittee. And I believe we're meeting with the select board next Tuesday night. So if you have an application, I recommend you get it in over the next couple of days. Off the top of my head, that's all I can think of, Mr. Bott.
Under the planner director's notes, I think that Michelle has probably asked a couple times about minutes.
Oh, yes, I see that right here. Would email minutes be okay with the board rather than printing?
Because this is, you know, forty-five pages of paper.
Yeah, sure.
And, you know, the stack of goodies we had already, I mean, felt awful. Not blaming you. But, so the question that Michelle had, or can she just email you minutes to review? Or do you want them in a hard copy?
John?
I'm fine with email.
Yes, I'm fine.
You could say, if you're not fine, I'm sure, thank you. She'll print up a set just for you. Absolutely.
Yeah, I, yeah, because I got everything on my phone and it's, yeah.
I will, oh, right.
Right, I do.
Impossible to read. I'm okay with email. So the board is okay, but Mr. Dionne needs his glasses to read, so...
Yes.
So, to that effect, I think you have minutes.
Yes, so I have draft meeting minutes of April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. The only correction I would make would be on paragraph three where it says Kevin Shea opens the meeting to nominate a vice chair.
Kevin, where?
It should be, third paragraph, it should be Cornelius.
Oh.
And that's the only thing I noticed.
Thought it might have been your brother or something.
Pardon?
Thought it might have been your brother or something.
All right, so if... If everybody is comfortable, the Board will accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
I will make said motion.
Motion by Ms. Sordillo.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Degatsky. I'll give you the minute.
So, on May ten, who moved, who seconded?
Ms. Sordillo, on approving the meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Ms. Sordillo made the...
Oh, April twenty-six, excuse me.
And Mr. Gasky seconded it.
I seconded.
We're in the discussion phase, just to give everybody a chance to make sure they read them. Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky says aye.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Helen Sodillo says aye.
All right, and our next order of business is the Chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of May tenth, twenty twenty-two.
So, moved?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Again, you've already caught the only edit, so, which is Planning Director, and you change it.
Yeah, I, this job's had a lot of titles. Trying to go back to a simpler time where Norman Rockwell painted pictures of the planner napping and eating at ten thirty-six at night, so.
All right. Motion made and...
Seconded.
You made it.
Yeah.
Seconded.
Alan seconded.
Okay, just, it is very late. Mr. Dionne, sorry, Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Helen Sodillo says aye.
And it's so late, I'm having to lose, well, as far as I'm concerned, the Board will, unless I'm missing something, Mr. Bott?
You are not.
Then the Board will accept a motion for Jeremy.
I'll make that said motion.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much for your patience and attendance this evening.